Welcome to the City of Cupertino Planning Commission, March 27, 2018. We call the meeting to order and we will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Before we go any farther, I'd like to say that we do have five assisted hearing devices available right over there, and if you need help with it, you can ask a staff member for help with that. If you'd like to make a comment, we have comment cards on either side and you could submit them again to the staff at the end if you'd like to make a comment. Okay, roll call.
Okay, Commissioner Liu?
Present.
Commissioner Fang?
Here.
Commissioner Sun?
Here.
Chairperson Paulson?
Here.
And Commissioner Takahashi is absent.
Okay, next item is the minutes. Do we have any comments on the minutes from last meeting?
I do have one comment. In the section under New Business, it was reported that we made recommendations to the council, which is accurate. I was wondering if it would be possible to include the specifics of what we recommended, just for the record. Or, I know these are, what we have there is technically correct, but I wanted to get a sense of what my fellow commissioners thought. I could recite some of these items if it was, I just didn't know it's a policy that we want to capture what actually got, what actually was recommended.
Actually, I had the same comment. I think in particular, because there was discussion and adjustment in a number of those points, I suspect maybe we should perhaps table approval of the minutes for this time and then have that appended next time whatever gets sent out, if that's...
Okay, so just a brief phrase as to what we decided.
Just the list of, I think there was, there was a list that was generated. We recapped it and that would be visible on the, you know, on the video, but because there was discussion, it wasn't always clear, you know, exactly what we were...
Yeah, we can certainly add that and have this item back for the next hearing.
Okay, so do I hear a motion to table the minutes till next time?
Oh, I'll make a motion to table the minutes till the next meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, and all in favor? Okay, and that passes unanimously. Next item is postponements, any postponements? Okay.
We have no items for postponement.
Okay, next is oral communications, and this is for someone who'd like to speak on something that's not on the agenda. You have three minutes. If you'd like to, you submit a card and this is any topic you'd like. The law prevents us usually from acting on this item, but you're welcome to say something if you'd like. Anyone for oral communications? Okay, we have one, two. Okay, we have Kitty Moore, followed by Lisa Warren.
Okay, my time's gone. Greetings, City of Cupertino Planning Commission. Today, the Silicon Valley Business Journal and Mercury News both reported that Sand Hill Property Company has invoked SB 35 for Valco. The new plans have 1.8 million square feet of office, 2,402 residential units, and 400,000 square feet of retail space. Seven towers are shown in their rendering with heights up to 22 stories, or about 225 feet. According to the Silicon Valley Business Journal article, "The newly submitted plan meets the requirements laid out by SB 35," Mould said. If Cupertino officials agree with Sand Hill's assessment that the plan is compliant with state law, in the next 90 days, the city would be required to approve the project by late September. This new plan, however, is not a feasible alternative to the proposed project being studied in the EIR. SB 35 requires no EIR, and according to the article, the city would be required to approve the project by late September, leaving no time for the completion of the EIR. The city must halt the Opticus Form-Based Code process until the determination by the city attorney has been made as to the applicability of SB 35. If SB 35 applies, then Form-Based Code would have been a city waste of resources, which is not allowed. In light of this new alternative design, which is not feasible, it's not a feasible alternative to the proposed project described in the EIR, and recall that a feasible alternative... I'm not going to be able to get to that slide in time, I'm running out. Anyway, a feasible alternative needs to be attaining the same aspects as the original proposed project, but be reducing its impacts, so this is not a feasible alternative. The EIR needs to be halted until the determination has been made. Should SB 35 not be found to be applicable, then the Opticus process in the EIR may resume. So, we need to wait 90 days.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, Lisa Warren. So, I'm glad Kitty went before me, so you could all see what you probably haven't seen yet. This was, this plan was submitted today at 12:30 to the city. Of course, the press knew about it before. I'm here to deliver a message that was sent to all of you, but you may not have gotten it, given the short notice, and you may not have had a chance to read it. I have copies for all of you and a copy for the record, because it's very important that this gets put into the record ASAP. The email is from, that was sent with attachments, or a link to a survey, is from another resident, but she's also a school board member, and she is currently at a school board meeting, so I am delivering this for the record. The email says, "Dear City Council members and planning commissioners, the petition below started at the end of 2017, as we learned about the new housing laws in the state of California. You had time to clarify the zoning standards then at Valco, but you chose to do nothing. Let the record reflect that you could have tightened the language in the general plan so that it can't be misinterpreted by the developer to bypass community input and the city council approval and an environmental impact report in this case. You choose to, you chose to do nothing. Now, with 1.8 million square feet, how many more housing units would we need to build?" I have copies of close to 1,100 signatures, names, on the petition, and there's a link to the petition language, which is also on the bottom of the email. I will start, the petition was called, "We urge our city council to clarify zoning standards for Valco ASAP. The door has been left open wide for our city to be taken advantage of, especially at the Valco Shopping Mall site, a statewide pro-housing bill, including SB 35, which is what they are invoking. What's more, the ambiguities in our general plan will allow unwarranted increase of office and residential density at Valco Shopping Mall site, since our city development standards will be vulnerable to misinterpretation and legal challenges." Well, here we are. So, I am respectfully submitting this for the record. I have copies of, I couldn't print all the comments out from the petition signers, but there, I believe, are 85 comments, and the names of the 1,100 minus two signers, and the email that was sent. So, who do I give this to, because City Clerk's not here?
Thank you, Ms. Warren. Although we can neither comment nor act on this item, something tells me that we will be hearing more on this at a later date. Okay. Any written communications? No, okay. We have another, another item, person under oral communications? Sorry.
I turned it, and it's right there. Yeah, thank you, I'm sorry.
Jennifer Griffin.
You never know when you get here late. Anyway, good evening, Planning Commission, I'm Jennifer Griffin. I was going to speak about something else, about Highway 17, but since Valco has come up again, I would say, I don't know if anyone is aware, that one of the state representatives is talking about reactivating the, oh god, redevelopment agencies. I would say at this point, you know, I'm ambiguous about, ambivalent about redevelopment agencies. We only had one, and Valco was in it until a couple of years ago, when it was, for whatever reason, the governor decided to get rid of a lot of redevelopment agencies across the state. I think San Jose lost 23. Okay, whatever, that's its own's politics. But Valco was in a redevelopment agency since the 90s, probably because of the Icecapades Ring. And what I noticed, having come in to the city of 2000, was that the city council and the city was able to be, had tighter control over what happened at Valco. The owners of Valco had to listen to the city council. They listened to the planning commission. They listened to all the elected and appointed representatives of the city. And we went through probably two to three different owners of Valco. You know, it's, it's, it's an active shopping center, there's all sorts of things going on. But ever since it was taken out of the redevelopment agency, all hell has broken loose. That you have, and not on either side, it's just that everything that Valco was, it is now a big glorified rental car storage facility. I mean, we don't even have the theater anymore, and I'm assuming that we're going to lose the Bay Club, we're probably going to lose the Icecapades Ring, we're going to lose Benihana's if that's still there. And it's going to become a big storage yard for cars that are sold down on Stevens Creek Boulevard in the urban villages. It gets, sorry, it gets weird. But I think at this point, if redevelopment agencies are coming back, I think we should put Valco back in it, so that the city can be a partner to what is happening on that extremely valuable property. The owner has the right to do whatever they want to, but I think that they need to work with the city council and the planning commission and all the appointed, the city staff, everyone, and the residents, to come up with a plan for that property. And I think the city council needs a tight control over that property. We're being taken out for a joyride on a pony. At this point, I think if they want to put retail back, Godspeed.
Five seconds.
Anyway, thank you. I think we need to put Highway 17 to three lanes between Los Gatos and the summit. Thank you.
Well, as I said, more on this later. Now, we move on to Agenda Item Two, which is an application by the forum. So, staff, would you like to give us a report on this application?
Thank you, Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. As you stated, we have tonight, for your consideration, the Forum at Rancho San Antonio Senior Community Update. This is an overview site plan of the proposed development at an existing residential senior community. The project proposal, I'll just do a broad overview. We know there's a lot of speakers here tonight, a lot of great deal of interest, and I'll provide the overview so we can have some more discussion. The project proposal is 25 living units, a community building addition, that includes a fitness and dining addition, skilled nursing addition, a new memory care building. And I'd like to take a few minutes to talk about the review process. The proposal came in toward the end of 2016, and we spent 2017 reviewing the project, but also, we actually could have come before you a little sooner, but the, after the initial study, the applicant, the, excuse me, the forum residents, decided they preferred a more robust community outreach and environmental review, just to make sure that they were above and beyond the requirements that were necessary. And so, they elected to do an environmental impact review, and, which was a very comprehensive review, and found that all impacts can be mitigated to less than significance, or less than significant impact, and can be mitigated through standard mitigations, which are included in the draft resolutions, for your consideration. The environmental review committee reviewed the draft EIR and recommends approval. In the community outreach, there was, there were a number of neighborhood meetings internally, but also with the adjacent neighbors in the Oak Valley neighborhood. Besides doing site visits with our staff and our consultants, the forum also conducted individual meetings with adjacent neighbors, which, of course, we always appreciate. We encourage that, but we really can't force it. So, when applicants do it in a thorough way that the forum has conducted, it's, we appreciate that, and I believe some revisions have come out of it, and generally has neighborhood support. We do know there's, there's some neighbors who, you know, have additional comments and concerns and so forth, but from a staff perspective, and from an environmental review perspective, the villas that are adjacent to the single-family neighborhood have been, they've increased their setbacks, they've assured that the heights of the structures are really low, between 12 and 15 feet. There's landscaping, privacy landscaping, that's proposed on, as a buffer between the units, and they worked really hard as well to get, you know, the plants that the neighbors wanted between properties. So, that was a very important component, and it was a lengthier component of the process, but we appreciate that, and we hope that it's reflected today in the plans you see. As far as review process, based on the scope of the, of the project, the proposal, it does require city council approval, so you'll be providing a recommendation regarding the project plans and the EIR for consideration, and you have draft resolutions that have standard conditions, as well as the mitigation measures that come from the environmental impact report. This is just a quick graphic of, of some of the setbacks that the forum worked really hard to, to really shift the units around, and really consider a setback that's very robust. Setbacks range from 29 feet to the property line to roughly 60 feet. So, when you add in the standard single-family setback of 20 feet, we have nearly, on average, 50 feet plus building separation, if not more, in some cases, for the interior units as well. So, with that, we would like to, I know that our environmental consultant is here, if you have questions regarding that issue, as well as the, the members of the forum, who can speak to their project as well, as far as the service they provide to the senior community. As you saw in the proposal, it's three parts. You have the independent living piece, assisted living, and then moving up to skilled nursing. So, that's just a range of, of services that we find to be consistent with the general plan, which, which tries to serve all demographics in our community, and really consider, you know, the aging demographic in our community, to be able to, to move out of perhaps their single-family homes and live in a community that they, that they've known all their life. So, with that, we would like to recommend that you approve, or recommend approval to the city council, and I'd like to close it out for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Kitty.
Thank you.
Excellent presentation, good staff report also. Commissioners, questions for staff?
Quick question. When they apply for the 25 unit of villas, do they submit the future plan for the upgrading for the skilled nursing facility and assisted nursing facility, where they are going to plan for the future? So, I think this is kind of related.
Yes, yes. So, while the villas will be built first, your plan set and proposal that's on the table today is considering the whole project, which is future renovations and additions that will be subsequently built after the villas.
So, it's the, it's possible is for Planning Commission or for the city council to consider the future, the entire project, to the environmental review, the impact, and also is the traffic, safety, and the drainage, all this put together, or it's just we can do separately?
It's the holistic project. So, we know of a project, CEQA prohibits us from parceling it out. It needs to be a holistic, what we know to be happening. So, it's not a speculation. We know that this is going to happen, and it has to be taken into consideration in the review.
I do have a couple of questions. There's a gas line through the project, and I don't know if that's a transmission line, which is the big line, or a distribution line, which is the smaller line. Do you know which this is?
I think our, the applicant's engineer can probably answer that more, more specifically, but it's, for sure, it's a line that's, that's usual to a neighborhood. So, I don't know the hierarchy of those lines, but it's what's usual to a residential institutional neighborhood.
The reason I'm asking is that in meetings with the residents, the topic of planting for screening came up, and I got some information about planting near PG&E pipelines. And it's somewhat restrictive, and there are some concerns. PG&E has been removing trees from largely the large transmission lines. So, I just was wondering what the issues are that would preclude perhaps different types of screening planting?
Well, PG&E does come out and mark, and they are involved in that, that process at the construction phase, so they would be required to, you know, stay out of the easement, as well as whatever the buffers might be.
Okay. And another question, and this is my, as a former park ranger, I always concerned about wildlife. What, what issues have come up about wildlife protection or bird protection in the process of planning for this?
Well, our, we, our environmental review included a review from a biologist, and there, basically, some standard mitigation measures. For example, in terms of tree removal, we have to survey for nesting birds. Arborists will definitely have certain times of the year where trees can't be removed, or they have to do a nesting survey. If there are no nests, then you can remove, but that work has to be done to make sure that we're not disturbing that wildlife that's, that might be in the trees.
And also, I had some communication about concern about window size, or bird-safe windows. Did you have any discussions about that as well?
We did, and we, we had our, you know, our team look at that a little bit more. And there's, the designs of these, of these villas are actually quite traditional, so we don't have anything that's, you know, we do have some buildings, I won't mention in the community, that are, have a lot of glass. I think we're all familiar with what those are. That's not going to be occurring here. These are fairly traditional buildings that won't cause that, that type of reflective problem for birds.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Guess now we have a presentation by the applicant?
Oh, good. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Mary Elizabeth O'Connor, and I am the president of the board. Whoops.
Do you have to go into view?
Oh.
On the dashboard.
I got it, I got it.
Can I go into full screen?
Yeah, oh, sorry.
It's not on the first page either.
Oh, it isn't? Okay, okay, sorry. And full screen.
Oh, under view.
Under view. Got it.
Should we go back to where?
Does somebody help?
I don't know if we gotta somehow go back to where we were.
Well...
Well, she's just doing that. I might say, I have four speaker cards. If any of you other also would like to speak, you can fill out a blue card as well.
And then go to zoom.
Is it page display?
No.
And then with a, with a group this size, I always say that if someone, if a speaker before you has said what you were going to say, and has said it better, feel free to just remain seated and relax and enjoy the evening, and we'll all get home a little earlier.
Here it is. Okay, go to, go to view.
You gotta go to the first page, though.
Okay.
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 We're gonna now go to view.
Now, I see you.
Full screen.
This one?
No, next to it.
No.
There you go.
Okay. Technical problem, sorry about that. Again, I'm still Mary Elizabeth O'Connor, president of the board, of the, of the board of the Forum at Rancho San Antonio. And I want to start by thanking the professional staff for their coordination, and the Planning Commission for holding this meeting. It's been a long time coming, and we are very happy to be here. I also want to thank our own members, and our neighbors and others for coming tonight. Last year, the Forum celebrated its 27th anniversary, and we are very proud of the high-quality care and community we provide to Cupertino seniors. Unlike many continuing care communities, the Forum is a cooperative. It is owned by our 319 members, with over 500 seniors living there. We are not a for-profit company, but a group of seniors who came together 27 years ago to deliver the best care and services as we age in Cupertino. While we continue to deliver the highest quality continuum of care, our physical infrastructure and buildings require renovation, additions, and new buildings. The upgrades to our medical facilities are critical to comply with the pending healthcare laws, and to ensure the Forum's continued viability and success over the next 27 years. So, while we provide five-star service, our buildings require major updates as we have reached that time in the building's life cycle. So, here is an overview of what we are planning to do. So, the building, the parts in gray are existing, and we will make no changes there. The... So for these important reasons, we have spent the last seven years working on our community update. The upgrades include additions to skilled nursing and our rehab facility, new memory care building, upgrades to assisted living with a main street, new multipurpose building, fitness center addition, and independent living villas. The villas are of particular importance for the success of our endeavor. It is the revenue from these that provide the equity required to fund the product, project. And because we are not a for-profit, the owners must fund the improvements on their own. So the villas are the financial engine that allow us to upgrade the critically needed medical facilities. Over the past several years, we have shared our plans, received feedback from our own membership, from our adjacent neighbors, and the surrounding neighborhoods. The more than 40 meetings and updates have included open houses, small groups, and individual meetings, and we follow-up meetings with individual neighbors, and we provided multiple updates to neighbors along the way, including about this hearing tonight. Our goal has been to be as responsive to feedback and neighbor requests as possible while ensuring that we have a financially feasible plan and sustainable community going forward. So I have asked our owner's representative, Peter Lynn, to walk, to walk you through our process and an alternative response to neighbor requests. And while he's coming up, I'd just like to ask forum members and others who are here tonight in support to please stand. This approval is critically important to our future, and I thank them for coming. Peter?
Thank you, Mrs. O'Connor. Commissioners, I'm Peter Lynn with Greenbrier. Thank you. In terms of outreach, we have received positive comments about the forum as an organization, and few or no comments regarding the medical facilities as they are interior to the property. The focus has mostly been on the villa's interface with adjacent neighbors. So let me share what we heard and our thoughts and recommendations in direct response to neighbor feedback. For the broader neighborhood, we had requests to increase setbacks and green buffer at Oak Valley entry. From our adjacent neighbors on the berm, we had requests to eliminate or relocate villas from the berm and one near the healthcare center. Increased setbacks, which includes reduced width of the frontage road, relocate frontage road entry, remove parallel parking. We're also heard request to increase privacy, such as adding privacy in berms, enhance landscaping, install new good neighbor fencing. We also had a request to improve the drainage at the boundary line to Oak Valley development. With our proposal, we planned the villas as single-story and 15 feet in height on the berm edge. The setbacks next to existing homes exceed a minimum of 25 feet rear yard setback like the Oak Valley neighborhood. They range from 29 feet to more than 60 feet from the property line and 52 to 85 feet between homes. We also proposed generous landscape and screening to address privacy concerns. We are confident that the proposed project can provide the privacy, landscape buffer, and other treatments for our neighbors and future residents of the villas who share the same interests in terms of privacy. That being said, we looked at various ways to further respond to neighbor requests and have redrawn the berm plan multiple times. I want to share with you one plan that eliminates four villas on the berm, including the Oak Valley entry. These are indicated with red Xs, and relocating them to other areas of the site as suggested. In addition, this plan shifts locations of all the villas at the berm to provide significant additional setbacks from the Oak Valley neighbors. Let me show you the Oak Valley entrance. By eliminating two villas at the Oak Valley entrance, setbacks increased from the range of 28 to 35 feet to 59 and 66 feet, which allows more planting and create a stronger green buffer and transition at the corner as requested. To increase setbacks for our neighbors, in this plan, we reduced the frontage road width, eliminated parallel parking, narrowed the median planning area, relocated the frontage road entrance. We also eliminated four villas from the berm, two at the Oak Valley entry, two villas behind our neighbors, Jacquet and Starkey. We increased the setbacks for all neighbors an additional five to 29 feet. There is now 41 to 73 feet of setback from the property line and 66 to 96 feet between homes. To improve privacy, we added a privacy berm, enhanced landscape between the homes, included a new good neighbor fence. To further address privacy concerns, we are excavating one to five feet of the existing berm. Here you can see the distance between the homes, the privacy berm, and the combination of trees and shrubs for landscaping and screening. This is Villa 66, behind the neighbors, Starkey and Jacquet. This is a 59-foot setback to the property line and 85 feet between homes. As a compromise from our 25-villa plan, we can accept a 23-villa plan. This plan eliminates four villas from the berm, relocates three villas to the lower ridge area on Villa Esplendor, reduces a duplex to a single on Upper Sereno Court. As noted in the staff report, while the EIR is not legally or technically required, and it has been costlier and more time-consuming, we appreciate that the city initiated an EIR to provide more information to the public. The villa reduction at the berm and villa relocations were evaluated in the EIR. The draft EIR clearly demonstrates that the proposed project results in no significant unavoidable impacts and no impacts that cannot be mitigated to less than significant. While some neighbors may speak tonight and say that they want more villas moved, having no villas on the berm is just not feasible. As you can see, the forum has really made every effort to directly respond to neighbor requests and now needs to move forward with the project. We concur with your staff recommendations for approval, along with the environmental review committee's recommendation for certification of the EIR. The forum requests your recommendation this evening so it can move forward with this exciting and necessary project for our community. We thank you for your time and consideration and are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions from commissioners?
Peter, I just, a couple of quick questions. First of all, thank you for the thorough presentation. Could you bring back the map of the 23-villa alternative that you just showed? In particular, you have two Xs near, I think it's V69, but it looks like only one unit was removed. I was just wondering what, I hope, just wondering what that means. It looks like one unit was removed, but there are two red Xs there, where you have the cursor.
Yeah, there were duplexes before that was there, and they were removed.
So there were, there were two duplexes, so that, okay, so that. And then you had another picture that showed a setback. So I was wondering, and I couldn't read the annotation, what's the setback right now for the units, V66 and, I guess, in the V, in the 23-villa alternative, you don't have it, to V69? What is the setback?
The setback right now for villas, or the V66, is a 59-foot setback to the property line and 85 feet between the homes.
Okay, for 66?
Yeah.
That's the leftmost one?
Right.
On the berm?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Other questions? Well, I will say, you know, I appreciate all of you coming and indicating your residency by standing and by appointing spokesperson. I'd love to chat with each of you individually, but if you all came to the mic, we'd be here all night. So thank you for your, your presentation. Any other questions?
Jeff, I think this was a good opportunity to pick up your question about the gas line.
Yeah, do you know anything about the gas line, if it's a transmission or a distribution?
I think I might defer to my civil engineer that might know a little bit more about exactly what that is.
Hello, I'm Eric Swanson from BKF Engineers, civil engineer of the project. Yeah, what's in that easement is actually two 10-inch steel distribution lines that are there. And so PG&E requires a 10-foot setback to those lines. So we physically potholed them, which means we located them in the field, we dug them up and observed them and actually put them into our survey. And we exceed the 10, just to make sure that we knew where they were, because they weren't centered within the easement, as it turns out. And so we exceed the 10-foot setback everywhere.
Okay, then you've just got to be careful what you plant over them, right?
Yes, yes, we'll definitely be respecting that.
Okay. And while you're up at the mic, I have a question about, I'm always concerned about stormwater drainage, especially in the foothills, both in terms of the volume during storms and the loss of water to the ecosystem as it spills off the site without being contained and percolated back into the soil. Have you constructed any, any retention swales or percolation structures?
Yes, most of how we're going to be treating the stormwater there will be through, especially at the villas, through bio-retention. So we'll have these fairly deep planters that the water will flow into. They'll be open-bottomed to allow some percolation, but the soils here aren't very conducive to percolation. So we do usually have a French drain that goes into these systems.
Okay.
And it's engineered, so the water does get slowed down, though, so we don't increase any of the runoff.
Okay.
To the system downstream.
Okay. And I will say that I had some questions about disaster and fire and especially wildfire danger. And I did discuss this with the chair of the Cupertino Public Safety Commission, and he agreed to convene a meeting of all the players, the forum, the diocese, Mid Peninsula Open Space, county fire, planning staff, and to really work through these fire concerns. So I know that probably wasn't your primary concern in engineering this, but do you have any comments about fire just up front?
Well, we'll definitely be working with the fire department. You know, we're gonna be creating a fire lane through that new road that goes to the villas. There's already a fire lane that runs through the site, obviously, but we will be working closely with them and when we go through the permitting process.
Okay. Other questions? Yeah, sure. Yeah, we have a question for the applicant, if that's okay.
Sorry, just coming up with the new questions.
No problem.
I think during the city staff's presentation and your staff, it's both mentioned the unit 23 and 25.
That's correct.
So for, for my understanding, it's generally, if you have a 25 proposed, 23 is supposed to be the compromised alternative. So this is maybe coming from the, your negotiation with the neighbors and, and what's kind of circumstances you think is you can compromise from 25 to 23? Or what's the unsolved or unsettled dispute between you and the neighbors so you can go to the 23 from 25?
Right. Miles, do you wanna?
We've asked what the dispute is.
Oh, the dispute, I'm sorry, I'm not understanding your question.
Okay, my question is, what's the bottom line between you and, you have a several round outreach to the neighbors?
Right.
So you have a proposed, here is 25 versus 23.
Right.
So for us to make a decision, I want to know the bottom line from applicant, from your side, on the, what's kind of the dispute you, you still didn't solve with neighbors?
Well, we, we reduced the overall number that was right adjacent to them, and we relocated a number of them. But 23 is the minimum that we can get the project to work. Does that answer your question?
No, no, really, yeah.
Right, we made the change because of wanting to work with the neighbors. And as you can see, we made a number of adjustments for the setback. And in working through the program, one of it, I mean, we looked at various solutions, and one of them that we came through was what, what will it take to get to a minimum? What can we get, what can we get to work and still get the neighbors to, to work with us on it? And that's why we arrived at 23. We can make that work and make the moves necessary to hopefully bridge the gap between us and the neighbors.
Okay, thank you. Maybe it's, I can, after the public comment, I can figure out where the real issue there.
Okay, I do have one other, oh, go ahead, sorry, one question.
Actually, this is maybe a comment more for staff. So given that in our agenda packet, we have materials for, that the EIR essentially was the 25-villa plan, and then there were two revised and relocated alternatives for 21. But it looks like this 23-villa, even though it wasn't in the agenda packet, elements of it is covered. I mean, would you, would you concur that what's been studied for the 21 would be applicable for the 23?
Absolutely. So the proposed preferred project, which is 25, was studied and found to be of no, you know, all, all impacts can be mitigated to less than significant impact. And so anything less, of course, would be the same, but we, we don't, from a CEQA standpoint, we don't distinguish between, when you've got a project that already isn't causing an unavoidable impact, it's, it comes down to, you know, what is it that the applicant is proposing? And so that's what's on the table today.
Thank you.
One other thing, I had a communication from a resident about, concerned about sewer smell. And I contacted a member of the board of the Cupertino sanitary district, who's also a civil engineer. And he said that they're planning a new sewer pumping station, so any, any possible sewer smell will not be there in the future. Do you have any comment on that?
Yeah, we have been working with them, and our civil engineer has done some of the evaluation, and gone back and forth with them. And, and we are working it out with them as far as figuring out how much of the sewer capacity is, is coming from, from us, and we'll come to some agreement on paying for our portion of that.
Okay. I have a related question to that. So in the response to the draft EIR, there was a comment from the sanitary district that asserted that mitigation measures needed to be agreed upon. In the response, basically, the, the comment was the mitigation measure is fixed, and what's at, in question here is their fair share formula. I just wanted to, so it looks like there are two different perspectives. I wanted to get staff's perspective on, are the, so is this really just the mitigation measure is what it is, and the question is really what's the fair share cost? Or are there different alternatives here in terms of the mitigation measure for the?
Yeah, so the Cupertino sanitary needs to, you know, provide some, some studies and data that's, you know, ongoing as far as the capacity and which neighborhoods are contributing, you know, to that, to that line. And so it's, it's, it's basically the, the ball's in their court next in that, in the iteration of the development, to provide the data for a fair share amount, what the dollar amount would be. But as far as any upgrades and so forth that is attributed to the forum's use, they've agreed to, they being the forum, has agreed to contribute their fair share.
Okay. So, so basically, any upgrades to this Homestead pumping station, that's, that's sort of under the jurisdiction of the sanitary district. We do what we do, and then the project would only move forward if they agree with the applicant on that caution formula.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Actually, just to follow up on that, so from our standpoint, in terms of giving a recommendation on this proposal, do we need to have any wording directly related to that agreement, to the?
No, so you're, we're covered by our standard conditions, which requires, you know, that's a hurdle through our building process that they must clear before building.
Thank you. Okay. I do have one procedural question, maybe our attorney could help us with this. You know, the, the chair of the Public Safety Commission said he would convene this, this fire meeting, which I think is really important. Is that something that we should just let stand as a verbal issue, or should we provide some kind of formal request or direction from the planning commission or recommendation to the council that this meeting take place?
Good evening, chair and councilman, and planning commission members and members of the public. I think you have some options. I mean, I think as a planning commission, you can make a recommendation to another standing committee or committee.
Uh, is that something that we should just, uh, let stand as a verbal issue, or should we provide some kind of formal request or direction from the Planning Commission or recommendation to the council, uh, that this meeting take place?
Good evening, uh, Chair and Councilman and Planning Commission members and members of the public. I think you have some options, I mean, I think as a planning commission, you can make a recommendation to another standing committee or commission of the City Council, you can ask staff to, uh, request such a meeting, um, I don't think it needs the City Council request, I think it can come from the commission itself, or?
Okay.
You can direct staff to do it.
Okay, well, let's put that in the formal process, just, just to make sure that happens, okay? Okay, any other questions for the presenters? Okay. Well, now we move on to the, uh, public comment period, and you each have three minutes. The buzzer means you have fifteen seconds left, okay? So first we'll call, uh, Dick Jaket, followed by Virginia Wilcox.
Good evening, Commissioners, my name is Dick Jaket. I'm a resident of Oak Valley Road in Cupertino, our home backs up to the, to the land where the Forum is planning to build, and there's seven other residents that have the same situation. Um, in two thousand and sixteen, the Forum called a meeting, and at that point, they said that they needed to build sixteen residents, not twenty-five, but sixteen, and it was sixteen that they needed in order to get the funds to, to do the improvements that they needed to do with the Forum. And now, I guess it's twenty-five, but I heard what Peter said, twenty-three, uh, we have some concerns as neighbors. First is safety. I don't know if you know or not, but there's one road in and one road out, and if you've ever traveled that road, when the park is in high usage, that you'll notice that people park on both sides of Cristo Rey, people are walking in the streets, cars are turning around in the middle of the street, it's an accident waiting to happen. Now, the EIR addressed traffic, but that was taken on a day when it was forty-one degrees outside, no park usage, the key is the park. So, so that's one issue. Another issue is there is another road, but it's locked, it's, it's an escape road, and when there are incidences that close down Cristo Rey, and by the way, there've been two of those incidences in the last twelve months, that gate is supposed to be opened, in one incident, it took an hour plus to get that open, and if there was really a bad incident and cars are pulling through there, piling through there, that's gonna be a nightmare getting through there. Another issue has to do with the density of the Forum homes. Um, we believe that the homes are at a little bit higher elevation than what our homes are. Uh, there are current drainage, I know we commented, you commented on this earlier, but there's drainage and flooding problems. One of the neighbors who backs up to this land already has to have sandbags along their fence, so we're very concerned that that be done correctly. Um, the, the other thing is that, uh, in terms of site, the site character, it's an open space, somebody mentioned birds and trees, there's no trees on that land at all. Um, there's lots of animals that use that as a pathway and for grazing, there's turkey, there's, there's deer, there's a number of different birds that, that nest there, so we're very concerned about that as well.
You've got fifteen seconds.
Okay. In summary, uh, we are asking the commission not to approve the plan for twenty-five homes. Uh, the Forum came to our house in, I think it was October, and said they wanted twenty-one homes.
Okay, I'm sorry, sir, your, your time's out.
Okay.
Okay, next we'll hear from Virginia Wilcox, uh, followed by Elizabeth Towsey.
Good evening, thank you for taking my comments. Um, my name is Virginia Wilcox. Uh, I'm fortunate to say that I am one of about five hundred seniors living at the Forum, which is a not-for-profit healthcare community in Cupertino, as you well know. My husband and I moved here something short of two years ago. The Forum is a member-owned residence licensed and regulated by the State of California Department of Health Services and the Office of Statewide Health Planning and Development. In order to meet pending healthcare regulations, as well as maintain our long-term viability, we are at a point where we must upgrade and modernize in the areas of skilled nursing, rehabilitation services, assisted living, independent living, and memory care. Critical to our plan, our plan to update these levels of care, is the sale of a minimum of twenty-three new independent living villas. These villas are regulated under our license and are the financial wherewithal that will, will provide the funds to upgrade all care services I just mentioned. Toward that end, we look forward to certification of the environmental impact report by the Planning Commission, we hope, very soon, and to continuing to work with the city as we move ahead to make the Forum an even better choice for senior living for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, now we have Elizabeth Towsey, followed by Harvey Dixon.
My name is, good evening, my name is actually Edith Towsey.
Oh, Edith, I'm sorry.
That's why I was hesitating.
I'm so sorry.
Uh, my name is Edith Towsey, and the Forum has been my home for ten years now. We have been working on this plan for our community update for many years and believe it is, believe it to be critical for our future. Our membership voted to support the plan and move it forward. Many of the upgrades are interior renovations to existing buildings with some additions and some new buildings. In order for us to remain competitive in the future, it is important, it is important for us to make these changes now. The new villas are essential to the financial plan to upgrade all of our medical facilities. I just wanted the city to know that we need this project to move forward. I support the plan, and our community supports the plan, and we ask that you please approve, approve it this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Harvey Dixon, followed by Marian Kelly.
Mister Chairman and Planning Commissioners, my name's Harvey Dixon, I've been a member of the Forum for three years. I just want to share with you the importance of upgrades to our skilled nursing facility and assisted living units in our healthcare center. We provide five-star service at the present time, which is the highest rating, but as it already been said, the facilities need to be updated to the latest and modern standards. Today, members have shared rooms and shared shower and bathing facilities in a dormitory format. This was the common format when the Forum was built in the early nineteen nineties. In order to meet today's needs and requirements, we need to update our facilities with private settings, along with some shared facilities, to maintain both privacy and dignity for our members as they age. This community update seeks to smooth the transition from the independent living to assisted living, to memory care and/or skilled nursing, by providing comparable, common areas and experiences in each. In that way, members can seamlessly transition from one continuum to another. This will also remove the more institutional feel and provide more home-like settings at each stage in the continuum. Getting it right is critical, and this plan will do that. I ask you to respectfully approve this proposal tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Dixon. Now we have Marian Kelly, followed by Lily Young.
Good evening, I'm delighted to be here, I'm Marian Kelly. I've been a Forum resident for three years. I believe that the Forum is a very special place, and that we residents are very fortunate to have found our wonderful home. I hope to be there for a long time to come, and while I'm there, to help prepare the Forum for future generations of equally happy Cupertino seniors. A primary key to Forum's success is the full continuum of care, all the way from independent living through skilled nursing, which allows us to age in place in a supportive community. Our current plans will enhance the Forum's ability to accomplish this and to be a beacon of excellence in the world of retirement communities. Therefore, I support the current plans and the EIR. I see that we have some of our neighbors here tonight, in addition to our own Forum members, and I would just like to extend my thanks to those neighbors for working collaboratively with us. Our staff, board members, and design team have been meeting with both residents and neighbors over the past year or more. I don't know if the Forum has managed to address satisfactorily every single issue that's been raised during that process, but I do know that the Forum has made and is still making good faith efforts to hear and understand the concerns and to be collaborative and responsive. We've worked with individual neighbors to do our best to address feedback and also to make sure we have a plan that is, in the end, financially viable. Thanks to you, the Planning Commission, for hosting this meeting, I ask that you approve our plans this evening.
Thanks, Ms. Kelly. Okay, now we have Lily Young, followed by Dale Peterson.
Good evening, my name is Dr. Lily Young, and I have been a resident of the Forum for many years. We are lucky to be at the Forum, because it is a very special place. I want to continue to live there for a long time, while helping to set up the Forum for future generations of Cupertino seniors. In the interest of not repeating what Marian just said, I will defer to all that she has said, but I'd like to repeat, so that we can leave this room remembering what we really feel about this project. The key to the Forum's success is the full continuum of care, all the way from independent living through skilled nursing, that allows us to age in place in a true community. I support the plan and the EIR. We have our Forum members and our neighbors, and I'll say the same thing to all of you. Our staff and board members and the design team have been meeting with these two groups, and as I, as Marian said, and I'd like to repeat, sorry, I know that if the Forum will be able, I don't know if the Forum will be able to address every single item that is raised in the process, but I do know that the Forum is making good faith efforts to be collaborative and responsive, working with individual neighbors, to try to address feedback, and also make sure that we have a plan that in the end is really financially viable. There are no significant unavoidable impacts, and this community update is essential to us, so that we can continue to receive the type of care and services well into the future. Thank you for hosting this meeting this evening, and I apologize for repeating, but I would like to make sure that everybody hears what we are all about. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Young. Now we have Dale Peterson, followed by Nancy Vian.
Hi, thank you, I'm Dale Peterson, I've been a resident of the Forum for three years, and I promise to be brief. Um, tonight, we're talking about our community update and the environmental impact report, and wanted to come down and tell you that I fully support both the Forum's plan and the scope of your studies, and I urge the Planning Commission to recommend the approval of the EIR and the Forum plans. Thank you.
Thank you. And as Councilor Chang would say, thank you for your brevity. Okay, uh, now we have Dale Peterson, followed, uh, by, okay, so now we have Nancy Vian, followed by Bill Temblin.
Thank you very much for taking the time to hear us speak, my name is Nancy Vian, my husband and I have lived at the Forum for four years. Since the Forum was built, of course, you know that medical requirements and expectations have changed quite a bit over the time, and, uh, the Forum is in critical need of update. The high cost of this project will be funded by the twenty-five new villas that are being proposed. There have been suggestions we eliminate some villas from the plan, but doing so would jeopardize the project, and the current environment of escalating building costs you can recognize would present problems. I ask that the commission approve twenty-five villas, or no less than twenty-three, in order to make this project financially workable. I appreciate the work our team has done in altering the plan to better meet concerns of our neighbors, we want the goodwill of our neighbors, and we hope they'll support our need to keep the Forum in an attractive, viable community, which one day, who knows, they may be part of. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we have, uh, Bill Temblin, followed by Jerry Fishbein.
Evening to the board and the community around. Uh, Bill Temblin, I've been a original owner in the Oak Valley, uh, community for eighteen years. Uh, I am right next to the, to the Forum, and I appreciate what they do, but I have some concerns as a, a neighbor that's right across the street from the Forum. Uh, when the Forum was built, it had issues, they had to deal with concessions and issues to get the Forum built originally. When they built the Oak Valley, we had to deal with environmental issues, open setbacks, numerous things with the environment. The back twenty feet of my house to the, to the open space is considered open space, even though I have a fence posted, I can't build in it, there's a lot of restrictions. Uh, ten years ago, they built an expansion at the Forum, they added a bunch of beds, a bunch of facilities. At the time, it was implied that was it, that was the growth. Now, when we look through today, we have another expansion. It does affect many people, uh, it does affect my house, I'm in a concern for my property value based on it. It's also about, will they do this again? You know, currently, for my neighbors and I, we're at the bottom of the hill, and we're right next to, uh, the, uh, the Forum and, and the street that's, that blocked off. Uh, there's a villa that's being put across the, away from me, and the concern is its height. Because of the elevation, there's a height issue, my, I have a pool in my backyard where this is gonna be put, my house is about ten feet in height, maybe twelve, it's gonna, its first floor will be at ten to tw- ten feet at least, top of that house is twenty feet. Currently, there's vegetation between that, that, um, property and mine, my concern is the vegetation can be destroyed, fired, or, or damaged, then it has great sightlines directly into my pool in my backyard. Don't, don't think that's, uh, appropriate, I now need to know that there's being put in place paths that, there's an enforceability of putting in the vegetation back in if there's an issue. Uh, there's also the aspect of, will they put clouded glass in some of the windows that would look directly look at, at the property, not only in my area, but the other areas? They do that in Palo Alto, they cloud glass where there's a direct look down into somebody else's property. So those are my concerns, and why am I concerned about, there needs to be an enforceability of some of these activities? I need to know that it's being enforced in when they, the plan is approved, because currently, example would be, I'm very experienced with the Forum, normally they're very good, but I, at the end of my street, every day I come home, and I look for the last five years at temporary can, storage containers that are at the end of the street, in their area. They have been different colored, different tarps, you know, it's an eyesore, they've been there for five-plus years, and it's temporary. Uh, additionally, they, right, right across the end of my street, they did do some favorable things, and?
Fifteen seconds.
Okay, with that, basically, my concern, is this it? Is this the last expansion, and will they work with the tenants to make things enforceable for what they put in place? Because it's, it's necessary for valuation of the property of the people next door.
Thank you. Now, uh, Jerry Fishbein, correct?
Members of the Planning Commission, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. My wife and I moved to the Forum five years ago. Since I'm a retired physician, I soon joined the RSI Board, which has responsibility for the Forum Health Center. The Board has worked hard to maintain our five-star rating in skilled nursing and rehabilitation services and our excellent record- services and our excellent record in local, county, state, and federal inspections. We have also expanded our services to non-forum residents in the greater Cupertino area. Four weeks ago, my wife, suffering from a severe respiratory infection, fell during the night and fractured a sacral vertebra. She spent five days in Stanford Hospital and was then transferred by ambulance to the forum skilled nursing service. She received superb medical and nursing care and intensive physical therapy, and she is now able to return home to our apartment in independent living tomorrow. I also witnessed the downside of receiving wonderful medical and nursing care in an aging physical plant that was built to 20th-century standards. No showers in resident rooms, resulting in having to use a community shower down the hall. Little privacy in semi-private rooms, where the two beds are only separated by a curtain and only one resident has a window. The forum needs approval of our master plan. Please approve at least 23 villas, the bare minimum needed as the financial engine to make our financial plan possible. Then we can deliver a state-of-the-art 21st-century health center for the benefit of not only forum residents, but residents of Cupertino and neighboring communities. A modern, safe, and homelike memory center. A main street in assisted living with all of the amenities enjoyed in independent living. Skilled nursing with full bathrooms in all resident rooms. Semi-private rooms with full partitions, picture windows for each resident, providing privacy and dignity. Modern nursing stations with electronic monitoring and patient communication. A health center that will rank as one of the best in California and one of the best in the United States, and that we are proud to have in Cupertino. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fishbein. That's all the cards I have. Now it is time for we on the commission to discuss.
I would just request, can we put that map of the 23 villa up? Just because it wasn't in our agenda packet. I've been staring at the 25 and 21 for forever, and now I feel disoriented because I don't have the 23 in front of me. So would that be all right, Peter? If you could put that up?
Yeah. I don't know how to start it again.
We can continue. I don't want to hold up everything for this.
We'll come back to that. Another question or discussion point?
Let me see if I can get to that.
Why don't you go ahead? Just jumping in, some question to the city staff. And during the -- there have two residents during the public hearing and the comment they against the development. The one of the reasons is now is I know is why there is the 23, 25 now. So for the reason they addressed, the one is regarding the privacy issue, I don't put too much weight on that issue compared with the average cities with privacy backyard. That's not very important. But the one question he raised, I think, is probably we need to consider a little bit more. That's the crystal rate, the transportation, the traffic there. If there have a major traffic accident going to happen, so it's how applicant deal with it. That's isment, how the emergency fire truck, and also it's the -- they have an alternative block road. How soon we can reopen it to solve the traffic issue? Is there have a -- in our discussion before?
So our -- part of our review process is that the plans get circulated to our fire district and so forth, and they review it for compliance with their standards of access, being able to enter and exit the property according to their code. And the fire district does find the proposal to be consistent with their code. We understand that there was a recommendation earlier of having a community meeting on, you know, fire safety or whatnot. I think that's an idea. I think that's definitely another layer above the review code process. But as far as fire code, they have met and passed the review.
Okay. The second question, sorry, is the -- maybe you can answer?
Sure.
Two, either one is okay.
Okay.
And they have one more question they raised, because for my memories, we have heard from 14, 16, 21, 23, 25. So that's all becoming your financial engines.
Right.
So I want your financial engine have enough gas there to run long-term. So it's a -- but in the -- the question he raised is not only about currently 23, 21, or 25. It's about the future.
Right.
You have something in your mind in the next 10 years? You are -- what's your -- another financial engine going to come in? Or it's the -- what's kind of plan?
We feel confident with the amount of villas that we have right now in the plan overall for the overall plan. It should take care of any needs in the future to upgrade, to renovate, whatever. We'd have enough of that financial engine to keep going with that, to allow us to do those renovations.
Thank you. Even there have a double-digit inflation, it's still okay, right?
That's --
It's okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You know, I want to revisit this fire issue a little bit. I was the Mid Peninsula Open Space District Planner for Rancho San Antonio, and I also wrote the first Palo Alto Foothills Fire Management Plan. I fought wildfires in the foothills, and they can be dangerous and scary, and with a number of people clogging the roads. I am very concerned that we not just meet code, but that we have a well-planned fire plan for that area, and also, I think, better signs for traffic circulation, so we don't get people hunting for parking places where there are none. I would also say, I think it's important that we all go to the Mid Peninsula Open Space District Board and ask them to increase the parking at Rancho. You know, the Bay Area population has doubled in the last 30 years, but the parking available for open space has not nearly kept up. And it's frustrating to visit there. It's frustrating to live nearby. So I would put that as an aside. We don't need to make an official recommendation. That's just my opinion, and I can say that as a chair of the Planning Commission. But it's true. It's important that we have adequate parking and that we don't have people blocking roads when large fire apparatus need to come roaring through in an emergency. Okay.
Go back to Jerry's.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. We can take turns here. This is a big project, so. So in the original project description, you had a V64. That's now been removed. I was just wondering if you could -- that's sort of in the middle. It's the red X sort of in the middle. There's a 63 remains, 64 still there. Just wondering if you can comment on that, if you're open to having 64 there in lieu of another unit somewhere else.
We evaluated, obviously, overall from all different parties, and when we looked at that location, which we refer to as Reno Court, originally, we did have a duplex there. But looking at it from a market standpoint, the location wasn't as ideal. It was more difficult to build on. There was more topography to deal with, and certainly, it impacted our -- the neighbors on the other side of that street. And the views weren't quite as desirable. And so we looked at, does it make sense to put a duplex there? It might be too big for that particular site. And so we looked at other ways to make it work, and it seemed like we could accommodate one unit higher up, easier to build on, less costly to construct. It made sense to put that there.
Okay. And then I'll just sneak in one other question here. A previous speaker, I talked about sort of line of sight into his pool. I was just wondering if you had any comments on that?
I do. This is -- I've got a -- so this is a section that was -- I'm sorry, I shouldn't walk away. As you can see from the slide, Mr. Temblin's home is 101 feet from the villa, and it's screened by significant trees and shrubs from the property and separated by a public road. There's no visual interface between his home and the villa, given the dense screening. And we've agreed to a condition of approval to maintain landscaping. We just simply -- I mean, it doesn't seem like there's an issue because of the amount of vegetation there, and we agreed to maintain that as a condition of approval.
So the maintain -- so basically, that includes replacement?
Right. Correct.
Okay. Other thoughts, commissioners?
So I was going to raise the same question. Actually, I think, based on some of the discussion we had had in previous hearing, you know, in a different site, maintaining screening vegetation, that's actually a general requirement, right? Yeah, so this is nothing that's required? There was no specific verbiage required in this one to maintain that area of concern?
So the condition is, and we do this for single-family homes that builds two-story, is that they're required to -- basically, it's a protected tree. Typically, a backyard tree, you're able to remove it. You have the private property right to do that without a permit. Under the, you know, certain conditions for single-family, we require the tree permit be obtained so that we can assure that the replacement planting happens. And so that's one of the conditions we recommended to be utilized here for this condition between --
So this is identified as one of those trees in the landscape?
It would be considered a protected tree, even if it wasn't a species that's protected, because it functions as a privacy screen.
All right. Great.
In this case, is Villa 62 intended to be one or two stories?
One story.
One story. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Fung? You know, I have a couple of thoughts. As a former park ranger, I hate ridge-top development as a rule, okay? But the zoning for all this was done long before I came on board, and I really appreciate the fact that we have Rancho San Antonio and all the other open space that we can raise our eyes to and enjoy, and you can all enjoy on your hikes and walks as well. But as the grandson of Russell Lee, who founded the Palo Alto Medical Foundation and who built a 2,000-unit senior housing project just a couple blocks away from the Palo Alto Clinic, I -- and I live next door to him. I was a very close friend. I see the importance of senior care, and now that I am one, in spite of my best efforts to postpone it, I see that the question about the gas for the financial engine is important. We don't know if the escalating cost of buying into the forum will keep pace with the escalating cost of medical care, but nonetheless, I feel that, you know, we're talking about 16, 21, 23, 25. Normally, I wouldn't like hilltop development, but in this case, since we're here, since we're going through the process, since we're going to be getting permits, going through all the costs, I would recommend that we approve, or rather, that we recommend the maximum number of homes to ensure the best case for quality medical care long into the future, so you won't have to come back to us in five, eight, 10 years and ask for more.
Follow-up to that question. Is there going to be a difference in the number of beds or whatever measurement you have for the capacity for assisted living, for the health center, all the things you're building? Are going to be a difference between 23 and 25? Is that two units giving you a buffer? Are you going to ask for more beds if it were 25?
No, I mean, overall, we looked at the overall project from a master plan perspective, and the amount of beds that we feel we need for skilled nursing and assisted living and the memory care, just due to overall project cost, that's what's necessary, is minimum 23.
Here's another factor coming into play here, and that is aging in place, you know? My mother-in-law just passed away at San Yvea a couple of weeks ago, and apparently, San Yvea used to take field trips that they don't take anymore because the overall population there is getting a little old to do that kind of thing. So I think as we all age, we're all going to be getting as amazing medical care, and we'll probably be living much longer than we even dreamt of living. So I think it's really important to provide the maximum capacity for medical care that we can at this time. Okay. Yeah, you can take your seat. We're just talking amongst ourselves now.
I kind of like being up here, so.
Okay. We'll call you back if we need it, okay? Thanks.
So it's actually -- I hopefully I won't bring you back up. I'm curious if we could just touch one more time on the -- there was a issue raised about a locked gate, and I'm wondering, is that controlled by the fire department or?
It's controlled by fire. They have -- I don't necessarily know the right words, but they do have pass keys for those type of structures that exist throughout the community.
And that's intended as a fire?
It's intended for fire use only, and so that, you know, cut-through traffic won't go through that neighborhood. It's just for emergency vehicles.
Great. Thank you.
Our delay doesn't surprise me, you know? To be honest, I keep a pair of bolt cutters in my garage, but, you know, if -- and I was involved with a fire that burned 14 homes in Los Altos and Palo Alto Hills, so I remember that fire. And these things happen very fast, and I think we really need to have a specific fire plan. Doesn't need to be 800 pages, but it needs to be a real, workable fire plan where everyone knows what to do when.
So I agree with that. I think that if this is intended as a fire route and controlled by fire, then it's important for that to be encompassed in the fire plan, but, you know, the discussion of it being, you know, having alternative or quicker access, in case you wanted people to drive through, I think that's probably a non-issue here, right?
Yeah. Again, I don't want to get into details of what I think could be included in the fire plan, but there are a lot of possibilities that can be explored by the professionals during that process. But what do you all think about maxing out the houses to provide quality medical care? I'm curious to hear your thoughts on that.
I know yours will already.
Well, I'm trying to understand if maximizing the number of houses does that -- so we get two more independent living units. Aside from that, I was -- and I think that was my question to Peter, was there -- would there be an impact on sort of medical care, however we want to measure it? Capacity, quality? Maybe you can comment on that, Peter?
Yes, it would have an impact on the medical care that we could provide with additional. I mean, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, not necessarily more beds, but the care would be improved.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So from my standpoint, although I appreciate what you're saying, I think that the zoning allows development at a certain level, which may be higher than what we've discussed here. That will continue to be the case if we take, you know, if we take no further action. So I think that, given that there's been a lot of effort here to negotiate a consensus, you know, whether it's a perfect consensus or not, but to negotiate a consensus with the community, I prefer to see that we approve the project as it's been brought forward with 23 and 25. That my vote.
All right, I'll just -- so my -- just some comments, I guess. So, you know, I've spoken to a lot of people about this project, and I think, you know, development is one of those things that, you know, we're here talking about, and I -- you know, we're going to be, I think, probably the city, that's what we're going to be talking about this year. And I know that homes, right, is something that's, you know, very near dear to everyone, and so that's why, well, everyone is here, and we've gotten all these letters and such. And so when we're sitting up here, you know, I listen to everybody, but I'm also cognizant that I'm really here representing the community, that, you know, the 99.9% of folks aren't here. I think generally, as a community, my belief is that senior care is a positive resource, is a benefit to the community. And I think it's, you know, I think most people would agree that we probably don't have as much of that as we would like. And so I appreciate the, you know, I think the professional way of both of the -- some of the neighbors I've spoken with, as well as the forum, in basically spinning the case. I would be comfortable supporting the 23. I think I agree with Commissioner Fung that, you know, given that's I think I agree with Commissioner Feng that, um, you know, given that's, that's something that the forum can use to deliver on the benefits that it wants to, to enable, I, I'm comfortable with that. And I, I had other thoughts about moving some units around, but I'm not gonna design your project up here on the dais, so, but I just wanna say, um, thank you for being here today and really the thoughtfulness that you've used to sort of educate us on this issue.
I would like to take just a moment for a point of clarification from our attorney, okay?
Yes, and I'll be happy to defer to staff, but just so that you, that record is clear, the application before you is for 25 units. So do you have discretion to go up to 25 or reduce it, but the application itself is for 25 units?
So we can make a recommendation for 23?
That's correct. I just wanna make sure that you understand the application.
Application for 25.
We could recommend even less if we wanted to, but I don't know if we want to do that. Well, again, we don't know what the future portends with medical care. Costs have been going up, not as much as we thought they would be. At the same time, we are living longer and the longer we live, the more expensive things get. That's just a given, almost always the case. In a, in a city that has an aging population and Commissioner Liu, you were talking about sort of the, representing the public at, at whole, as a whole, and, and Cupertino's aging. And yes, we're gonna be hopefully having some affordable housing, but the city's aging and I think the more we can provide top-quality care for our residents without going through a whole nother imagination of, of proposals and negotiations that you spent years working on and putting more gas in the tank, as it were, I would like to fill the tank up now. And obviously, you can build whatever is physically possible at some point, but, you know, regulations have to change, the zoning is in place, the application's in place for 25. And, and I feel strongly, even though from a, you know, ecology standpoint, fewer houses are always better, in this case, I think we need to care for our, our citizens and, and that's a very important issue.
Although I read a lot of questions about the, the project, but I personally don't have any feeling to the, between 23 and 25. It's the, the 25, I think it's the applicant that really want to, to get it and also it's the, uh, propose 23 as an alternative. But my understanding after listening to the, some audience, the object, objection to the, the, the plan, I personally, I'm going to concur with Chair Paulson. It's the, I support 25 application, the villa. The reason is for the, all the ER we have done completely and also it's meet with the 25 units. So whatever the, the below it, it's all automatic pass. Second thing is a, for the, any regulation here, it's we just try to balance the, the neighborhood and foreign existing, the, the interest. And for the planning commissioner, we need a very solid foundation to support 23 or worse, 25. I don't think it's, we have a very, very strong reason to oppose 25 unit. That's my personal feeling. So it's a, I would concur, it's a Chair Paulson to, to approve the application for 25 units.
Okay. One other thing, I, I spent a lot of time up there, spent a lot of time with the residents, walked around, had a tour with the forum people and also I know that land pretty well. And, and what would be legally allowed to be built would be houses much closer to the homes without the various relocations of, of structures that the forum has done. So what we would normally do here on the commission is we would, we would negotiate, we'd talk back and forth about can they move the houses a little farther away, can they relocate some of the homes to mitigate the impact? But you've already done that through your years of, of working together and I, I really commend you on that. It's not easy, takes a lot of time, both on the part of the residents, the neighbors and the, the forum officials and residents. So I commend you on doing a lot of our work for us, but really what, what this has been distilled down to is, is a proposal for 25. And I would like to recognize the, sort of the fruits of the, the hard work you've already done in that, reaching that compromise and, and support that. I don't think two homes is gonna make that much of a difference in terms of impact on the, on the neighbors, but every little bit that we can do to provide quality medical care, I, I think is important.
Yeah, I just make a, one more comment, okay? Two homes, it's very easy for the planning commissioner here or for anyone, it's that we can make a decision, but for the people, especially for the applicant and also for the foreign community, two homes means $4 million. That's the big difference. So it's for us, if we have a very strong opinions against 25 to reduce 25 to 23, I think it's, we need to think about the, all the objections the, the neighborhood released, but after the public comment, I don't think they can convince me to reduce the housing from 25 to 23. So I think the financial engine, I would like to make the engine running. That's the, my, just my opinion. I hope the, whatever the, the decision you make, it's okay.
Peter, actually, if you wouldn't mind coming back up, a couple of more questions for you. So this proposal for 23, has that been circulated with the neighbors?
We have not discussed that specifically.
Okay. So they, as far as they know, it's 21 or I guess?
It was still on 25.
Okay. And then, when I, let's see, so the, the two 21 propos, and I know we're not at 21, it's just what the ER had, there was a revised and a relocate, you know, I think those are the two alternatives. And I remember this, there was a discussion around the environmental impact of moving the three units, you know, basically relocating them near the ridge toward the north.
Right.
And I remember, I think, was there a conclusion that that in fact in, sort of results in a greater environmental impact in the original project or?
I don't recall.
Or what, what, what does it come out in a wash? Is there, there's no difference in terms of impact on wildlife, biological resources, that sort of thing? No, it's, it's essentially a constant?
Right.
Okay.
Mitigated in both cases, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't think, based on my, my professional opinion, that, that two more houses is gonna provide really that much of an impact because the, the roads are there, the traffic's already there, the adjacent homes are already there, the structure's already there.
Right, right. I mean, I think, so, so I'm mulling in my mind, right? So I'm at 23 and, and so we have, we're looking, thinking about 25 and, and, you know, we were here a couple of months ago and we're talking about a development and it was a BMR and there was like maybe, I don't know, 17 units or something, we're talking about wishing we could, you know, we, we, you know, that, that could be a larger number and I think, you know, I put, we'll put senior care in that category. I actually think that, you know, 15, 20 years from now, I, I mean, you, you have to keep refilling your gas and all that. I, I actually did like the idea of leaving that ridge empty, just so you could maybe do something later, right? Because you, and, so, I, I would be comfortable with 25, I think. I think it's, like I said, it's a, it's a community, I'm trying to look at it from a, sort of a community standpoint. I do very much appreciate, I think, you know, I, I can see there's been a lot of community outreach, a lot of efforts at, you know, ameliorating and mitigating the impact and I appreciate that. So I, I would be comfortable at 25 also.
Commissioner Feng, the, the scales tilt.
Well, so I'm, I'm curious what, what your expectations are if we were to approve a 25 unit? Given that there's, given that there's a plan for, you know, a plan, you know, plan at 23, but, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that has been part of your negotiation with the neighbors?
I don't think there's been negotiation. You, you said you haven't.
Right, right now, no.
So neighbors know it's a 25 proposal?
Right.
I don't, I don't.
Oh, okay, well, well, again.
I mean, you know, because I think that part of this, if my understanding, please correct me if my understanding, that there was an increase in the setback in the distance between the, the adjacent neighbors, you know, on that side, that was facilitated by the, by the relocation and removal of some of those units, right? So, you know, just, just to, you know, I, part of this is that if there was an expectation, if there was an expectation that this was dealt with, I actually know one of the, one of the people who lives on Oak Valley. And if there was an expectation that this solution, what we're, what we're discussing here was in place, then that may have caused them not to, you know, not to come and, and take issue with what would have been a closer setback. I mean, you know?
I'm sorry, I don't quite under.
Well, I, I think that, you know, the, the requirement, the back, the backyards have a back would be 25 feet by, by code.
Yeah.
And that's increased in some cases here to 50 feet.
Yeah, right.
Right? And that, that was facilitated by the redemption of the?
Yeah, I mean, there's been a, a long negotiation process. It's already occurred. If, you know, if we go with 25.
So I don't, so what happens, you know, what, if you, if you, if you okay 25, then, then they come back with a plan, they're gonna have to place that somewhere.
Well, you've already, you already have a map for the 25, correct?
That's correct.
So I would say, let's approve 25 and don't come back to us again for a long time.
Okay. Deal.
Well, I, I wanna make sure David's points are addressed here. So what, what you're thinking is because there hasn't been, the neighbor hasn't been notified of the 23 or I, I didn't quite follow?
No, I actually, actually what I'm saying is I think that, I think that the discussions around adjusting setbacks in distances, without necessarily looking at where did the, where did these units go? I believe that that's been part of, of, you know, how, how the consensus has been reached here. I, I could be wrong, so please correct me if I'm wrong on that.
So, you know, one thing I'd like to do in the commission, and I don't know if you need to stay here, do you have any more questions?
I can come right up if you need me.
You're gonna be up and down. But I, I, I try to promote intelligent discussion and we have that. As I said before, we have the best commission I've ever participated in, in terms of the, the respectfulness, the thoughtfulness, the intelligence and, and the way we, we usually reach consensus on issues. So I'd like to promote consensus. And right now, we're looking at a three to one and I don't know what you're thinking as Commissioner Feng.
I, I guess, I guess I'm just, I'm just wondering if, if there is, you know, if there is a community agreement here that's allowed this to come forward. I would hate to jeopardize that.
Yeah, yeah.
With a discussion of, well, you know, the, the version that, that increased the setbacks as, as a compromise, as a community compromise, you know, that they would not be bound to, to follow. You know, the, the forum would not be bound to, to continue that plan. That's the only thing I'm saying.
What, what community, I'm, I'm sorry, I?
So the setbacks have already been increased as part of the negotiation process they've done, right?
I'm, I don't believe that those setbacks would be that, the size that they are, as it was presented to us today, unless you're talking about 23 units instead.
Oh, is that correct?
Chair Paulson?
Yeah.
Chair Paulson, if I may?
Sure.
So, I'd like to clarify the zoning, okay? So the zoning is a planned development district. So by definition, planned development districts do not have setbacks. They certainly have, you know, height limits and things like that and, and other code requirements, but as far as setbacks or FAR, it doesn't apply. The, the idea being planned developments are generally larger scaled properties and you want to move things around so that accommodates exactly this, which is neighbor conditions, privacy, things like that, drainage. So in this case, the 25 code reference is, is a starting point, just like we would apply for a single-family neighborhood, we would use general lot sizes as a reference point for planned developments, but it's not a hard and fast code requirement. So theoretically, the forum could come forward with, with 10-foot setbacks, 5-foot setbacks, if, if the condition made sense, right? In this case, they just use it as, as a starting point to try to be compatible with what's right next to it.
Okay. And just also as a clarification for the neighbors in the Oak Valley homes, those are, are those R1?
Those are, I actually think planned development as well.
Okay.
And it's governed by design standards of their own.
Okay, thank you.
So we've had a, you know, a long, this, we're really just looking at the very tail end of a long planning process that you all have undertaken yourselves in, in planning and negotiating. Is there any more that we need to discuss before we vote, do you think?
It's okay, just the, if we're 23, just keep 23. This is 23, it's a, we have, we, we can vote without that on. I expected 2-2, so it's.
Well, the proposal now from, is for 25.
Yeah.
Okay?
So you're just making a motion for 25?
Okay, so who would like to make a motion for 25?
Well, I'll make a motion.
I would, I move that we recommend to the city council that we approve the, the 25 buildings as, as proposed. Do I need to read more? Okay, okay. Help me out here, Wasiya.
Yeah.
Okay. Recommend that, that the forum, application number DP-271 comma ASA 27, 2717-03 comma TR-2018-06, parentheses E-27-01, close parentheses, semicolon, applicant's Mary Elizabeth O'Connor, Rancho Retirement Housing Corp., located at 2350 Crystal Ray Drive, APN 342-54-999. I, I would like to move that we approve, or that we recommend 25 units.
Excuse me, is there a tree removal permit and other things we need to approve also? Should we do that as the same, part of the same motion?
Yes, you can, you can read it all in, in the same, as the same motion if you like and it'll be number two, architectural and site permit, as, as states in the.
What more do I need to read into the record?
The number two, just keep reading.
All right, okay. Number two, architectural and site permit for approval for renovations and additions to the existing facilities as well as new buildings resulting in 25 new independent living villas, 10 new beds and 4,026 square feet of renovations in addition to the skilled nursing facility, 10,500 square feet of renovations to the existed, assisted, I'm not auctioneer, assisted living facility, comma, 26 new beds and a 39,000 square foot new memory care building and 20,000, 27,000 square feet of renovations in additions to the commons facilities, dining, fitness and multipurpose room with associated site and landscape improvements. And that landscape improvements is important, as we discussed. And three, tree removal permit to allow the removal and replacement of 25 protected trees.
And you've, you've already referenced all the application numbers in the beginning of your statement.
Okay, all right.
So covered.
I'll second the motion.
All right, actually, we're gonna, well, okay, we'll start vote.
I think my yes light was, oh, thank you for clearing.
I'm still, whoops, what's going on? I'm gonna do, yeah, start vote, okay. Don't push yet, okay, go. Something's wrong. Something's wrong. Okay, next item, okay? And then, the suspense is killing you, I know, but, okay, now we'll push, vote, okay? Start vote?
That's not right.
Okay.
Wait, 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 now it's open.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, no, you have to show a V.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, how do you say vote?
Yeah.
Okay, unanimous, for the jury. I, I appreciate the applause, however, I would caution you, during planning commission meetings, applause intimidates people who are outnumbered, so please be aware of that and, and, take, yeah, take it, just keep in mind, don't applaud, you know, during a process where it's going on before a vote because it can be intimidating, okay? Thank you and have a good evening. Okay, now, where are we? We are regrouping. Number three, development permit to consider the proposed, proposed replacement of an existing 76 gasoline service station at. gasoline service station at auto repair shop with an updated service station and convenience market. Okay, so do we have, let's wait a couple minutes while things clear. You know, if I could ask one more thing, and that is if you want to have discussions afterwards, we have plenty of room in the foyer, maybe there's still some coffee and tea available, but if you could clear the hall so we can move on with the next item, we'd appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, number three, we have a staff report.
Good evening, Commissioners. Tonight, we're here to discuss a proposal for the existing 76 gas station. This property is located at 10490 South D'Anza Boulevard. We're evaluating three permits, a development permit, a conditional use permit, and an architectural and site approval. These permits is to permit the replacement of an existing gasoline service station and auto repair shop. It's currently 1,221 square feet, and we're looking to replace it with a gasoline service station in a convenience market. This will approximately double the size to 2,419. And conditional use permit for the proposed convenience market, concurrent sale of alcoholic beverages and gas, and 24 operation, 24-hour operations for both the convenience mart and the gasoline station. This is the project site. It is at the corner of South D'Anza Boulevard and Pacifica Drive, a couple blocks away from City Hall. So as part of the site development, it is an existing gas station. What they are proposing to do is relocate the existing four dispensers to allow for a wider drive aisle, and to replace a existing overhead canopy. I have images for existing proposed on the slide here. They are demolishing the existing gas station building and auto repair shop, doubling the size to a 2,419 square foot convenience market, and also building a new trash enclosure just north of the building. They will also be providing landscaping per our parking requirements, and improving landscaping and sidewalk along South D'Anza and on Pacifica. Right here is part of egress and transportation on site. We have them indicating on the northern property line, two driveways that exist right now. They are in, not in compliance, but as part of this proposal, they'll be consolidating those driveways off of Pacifica Drive into one. This will provide better safety access off the eastern side of the property. In addition, off of South D'Anza, there's one driveway that faces west, and they will be reducing the size to be within the requirements of our public works standards. A big portion of the land right now is within part of our South D'Anza, McClellan, and Pacifica modification project. So if you look at the image here, the existing property line is where the solid red line is, and the proposed property line is the dotted line just south of that. What this means is they'll be dedicating this land to the city. As part of their development, they will be developing most of everything below the dotted line, and when the city does have enough funds and land dedication, the city will be working on sidewalk improvements, which you can see in this image right here. So the city will work with the property owner to get encroaching permits that kind of work this new sidewalk project right there. You can see the curb and the landscaping. And the project, what is called the D'Anza Boulevard, McClellan, Pacifica Signal Modification Project, is part of the capital improvement program of the Public Works Department, and it's better, it is part of their project to improve the intersection right here, and I'm just gonna go back and show the site image right here. And you can see that there's the offset from Pacifica, which is running east-west, just north here, and then McClellan, which is right here. I've included the material boards here. As part of the discussion, we worked pretty closely with the architect to ensure that the style and the height really went well with the existing community right here. So it's an existing one-story building, and they're retaining that. The height of the building is about 15 feet, with roof screening that brings it up to 17 feet, and a entry feature that kind of highlights the entrance, because this is off of South D'Anza, which is supposed to be a major retail corridor, up to 18 feet. So they're proposing bold red and black glass and aluminum paneling, and this is a rendering that the applicant has provided. As you can see, most of the frontage is open with fenestration. This allows visibility off of the street. This gives a good interface between the public right-of-way and the interior of the store. Four, this lot is required to provide 10 stalls based off of our ratio of one parking stall per every 250 square feet. This project did, you know, as part of this proposal, they will be dedicating a significant portion of their land as well, and understanding that the convenience mart will have potential minimal effect on parking. People generally fill up on gas and depart. And so the planned development zoning does allow for flexibility for parking standards and other design regulations. So through this, we conducted a parking study, and they did onsite analysis and evaluation of other gas stations in our city. And the parking study yielded that the required parking would only be seven stalls, and the applicant does provide eight, so one additional. Bicycle parking, they are meeting the minimum requirement of one stall. As part of this approval, we did evaluate the additional square footage, the architecture, and the applicant is proposing three different conditional uses. These uses are not permitted by right, but if the planning commission is able to find that these uses will not impact, have noise impacts, odor impacts, or traffic impacts beyond general development, they can approve these conditional uses. So the three is have a convenience market, concurrent sale of alcoholic beverages and gasoline, and the 24-hour operations. So in the CG zone, businesses are allowed to be open from 7:00 AM until 11:00 PM, and anything beyond that would require a conditional use permit for extended hours. So as part of concurrent sales, these are the requirements that are specifically listed in our municipal code. The applicant is made aware of these requirements and have things that are required to be indicated on the plans that they have. So I've also included here four existing gas stations in the city of Cupertino that have various use permits, either for convenience market, for 24 operations, or concurrent sales of alcohol, and other conditional uses associated with gas stations. And the county sheriff's office did take a look at this site and did not oppose to the development. It is an existing gas station. They did recommend that there be installation of high-resolution video just for the rest of the site. Like I said, like I mentioned earlier, the glass and the facade of the building does allow for additional safety measures of that interface between the street and inside of the building. So the project is categorically exempt through CEQA, it's new construction and conversion of small structures. So we recommend that the planning commission adopt the draft resolutions, find that the project exempt from CEQA, and approve the following three permits. The development permit, DP 2017-02, the conditional use permit, U 2017-03, for the three following conditional uses, for convenience market, concurrent sale of alcoholic beverages and gasoline, 24-hour operations for the gasoline service station and convenience market, and to approve architectural and site approval, ASA 2017-04. And if you have any questions, let me know.
I have two questions. First, have the neighbors been notified of the applicant's request to reduce the parking from sort of 10 to eight spaces, sort of, yeah?
This is actually part of the proposal. It was not indicated specifically on the application because of the planned zoning, because its planned development does allow for that flexibility already.
Okay, and can you comment on the, sort of, the neighborhood to the north, east, and south of the property, please?
So I'm just pulling up this image for you. Outlined in red is the property, and if you look north of the property, there's an existing bank. To the west is McClellan Square. This is a shopping center within the city of Cupertino. Just south of McClellan, right here, is another market, another commercial center with, you know, general restaurants and massage parlors, community, commercial activity that's meant for the community. Just west of that are single-family residential properties, and they do face McClellan Square. Just to the east of the property is a commercial office. Right over here, our commercial office is mainly for dental offices, chiropractor, and then on to the east, there's a little bit more single-family homes right over here. And you can see this blue roof building right there is a Chamber of Commerce building. This is an existing auto repair and gas station.
So if I were to head east on Pacifica, how far away roughly would be the closest residential? I think there's a, some sort of a townhouse or, right?
Yeah, so it's one parcel over, it'd be right over here away from the parking lot. That's probably about 300 square feet.
Okay, great.
300 feet away.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Sa.
Yeah, a few questions. The first question, this crossroad is quite wide in terms of pedestrian, if they walk through the direction, across street. So when we build this new gas station, what's the design for the three traffics? One is the auto in to fill in the gas, and also it's a bike, and also pedestrian, especially when pedestrians go to standing at the traffic light, waiting there. So what's the safety concern, or what's the design for that part?
So currently, as part of this proposal, the intersections won't be changed.
Not at all, yeah.
No, as part of this development, it would provide the city land to make signal modifications later down the line. The signal modification is mainly the timing of the signals to allow for more efficient thorough traffic on South D'Anza, and from the side streets onto South D'Anza.
The question I raise, because on your proposal, there is some city going to take over the, some land there, so it's to make the crossroad, it's much, much wider, so it's just thinking if there have any safety concern, or if we design it and there have any issue there.
Yeah, I'm actually gonna have our civil city engineer come up.
Hello, Chad Mosley, city engineer with the city of Cupertino. With this project, we're getting a dedication so that ultimately in the future, we can potentially make some intersection modifications, which, as Ellen had indicated, would help to promote timing of D'Anza, as well as with Pacifica and McClellan. Additionally, with that project, there would be intersection modifications that would, you know, work to minimize the widths of the roads to make it safer for pedestrians. We would not have it be as wide as you see now, plus an additional 20 feet of dedication so that we're lengthening that crosswalk. We would design it to minimize that as much as possible. This is really an inefficient intersection with Pacifica and McClellan being offset, and what this allows us to do is more closely align those by giving us that large dedication. At some point down the line, we'll work on seeing what we can do to get additional land potentially from McClellan Square, or some other means to further align those to make it a more efficient intersection.
Yeah, that is my question also. I was a founding member of the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission, worked with Glenn and David for years. Have you talked with the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission about the concerns about how long it takes a slow bicycle to cross that intersection on a yellow light?
I personally have not, I'm sure David Stillman has.
Yeah, that's a big, it's a horrible intersection. It's just, I know you've done the best you can with a bad layout, but it's still, it's bad, it's dangerous. I'm afraid someone's gonna get killed there, especially an elderly person or a disabled person who takes a long time to ride their bicycle, or their tricycle, or whatever, across on a stale green light, okay?
The staff has concerns as well, which is why we have actively put an intersection modification project into the CIP project plan, and this is one step towards realizing an intersection modification there to kind of help promote those issues.
So I was looking at this map on Google Maps, and, I mean, ideally, we'd move the gas station where the street is, and the street where the gas station is, but I don't think there's enough room to make a curve in the street. You'd have to take over the parking lot of the building next door and make a real tight turn in order to have a 90-degree intersection. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I mean, this, if we were to relocate Pacifica southward, it would affect not just this property, but probably two, three, maybe even four other properties.
Yeah.
So instead of relocating Pacifica, we're just looking to shift it, to realign it better with McClellan, so that we can make that operation worthwhile.
And then, you'd have to move the gas tanks too, and that's a big deal, right, to rip them up and replace them, because you couldn't have underground gas tanks in the middle of a street, right?
Yeah, that's, it's a much bigger deal to do that, and this dedication that's been provided allows us to not have to do that at this point in time, but still maximizes the alignment as much as this property can allow.
Looking at the ideal situation, you'd, you'd take the massage parlor and you'd shave off one end, and put McClellan Road through there, and then give them the corner that is now the intersection, so they could expand, and that way, you wouldn't have to move gas tanks and all that. But that's probably a CIP project in the future, but I think it's a worthwhile one to consider. You have thoughts on that?
I mean, that would be a very large CIP project. It's probably quite a bit of development work, too. I imagine it would be a bit of a private public partner.
Sure, sure, yeah, yeah.
At this point in time, we're trying for realistic means of making the intersection more efficient and safer, and again, this is the first step in doing that.
Understand, okay. Well, I was gonna recommend moving the gas station, but, you know, in light of the tightness of that area and the small lot that the gas station's on, I think I'll give up on that. I do have a couple of questions, though, about the station itself. Are the pumps gonna stay open after the store closes? So you can use a credit card to get gas?
The store doesn't quit.
Oh.
The store's 24-hour.
24 hours, I'm sorry, okay. I wrote something about 7:00 AM to 11:00, that's what they're requesting an exemption for. Okay, sorry. The other thing is, I have concerns about the window area. A lot of convenience stores will have a glass window, but they'll block it with posters, you know, beer ads and stuff like that, so that someone holding up the gas station can do it in complete privacy. And do we have an ordinance about window area coverage, and how do we enforce that?
We do have window coverage requirements stated in our sign ordinance. Additionally, as part of this proposal and our condition of approval, we have indicated the applicant will keep the windows clear of spandrels and ads. And additionally, as one of the required findings for the conditional use permit for the concurrent sales of alcohol and gasoline at this location, that's also an additional condition there, so they will be kept open and free.
Okay, and no car repair then anymore, right? Okay, so that, you know, that will free up some of the parking, because I know the existing tenant has a lot of junk cars parked in the back, so that will free them.
Not this existing property.
Okay, well, they did in the past, but maybe not recently.
Yes, yes.
Any further questions? Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, so I was curious, there was a note in the staff report, the staff report about a change in the curb cuts. I'm curious if there's any comment. That actually may be something if the applicant's gonna speak, if that's gonna have any impact on the flow of how cars access the pumps. It seemed unusual to me. I assume that people who are using this gas station, they probably, maybe they drive past it and then turn on Pacifica, and then go into the gas station from that direction, or, or otherwise, you'd have to exit.
or, or otherwise, you'd have to exit on Pacifica, right?
So the two driveways that will be part of the proposed development, once it's built, does allow for two-way. So coming off of South Deansa going north, you can turn onto the South Deansa driveway. Additionally, they can go around Pacifica and continue taking a right on to the property. The consolidation of the curb cut really is to remove the, this one right here, just because of its location right at the corner of the intersection, it's kind of a dangerous turn, and so we've evaluated that maintaining this one over here is more critical, and addresses the safety concerns.
Okay, I mean, in general, reducing the curb cuts is good. It just, you know, I just wanted to make sure that this didn't, it wasn't clear exactly how people would access this station normally, so I guess you could come in, fuel up, come in on Deansa Boulevard, you know, come in here, and then kind of come in and turn around somehow, but that seems like it would be challenging. So it looked like, I don't know, whether people come in, they go like that, and then they...
No, use the other one.
Yeah.
Use the other one, use this one. Go there, they can come back, and also go this way.
Yeah, I play with, that's, it's pretty small a place to turn around.
We also have the applicant here that can maybe speak more to their standard operation, and speak a little bit more about what they expect in terms of...
I was wondering, do we have any public comments on this item? Yes, we do, but we'll wait till after we're done with the questions of the, we wait for the staff presentation, the applicant's presentation, questions for applicants, and then we'll go to the public comment, okay?
Good evening, my name is Amir Kojasteh, I'm the architect for this project, and would like to answer any question that you have, especially for you, you wanna just, you know, have it just, you know, go around in a circle and go back to Deansa, right?
Yeah.
But unfortunately, it's gonna be very dangerous if you wanna do that. Reason being, you know, we dedicate lots of, you know, land to the city for the future, you know, the project, therefore, we have to give and take, because we couldn't, you know, make it in another, you know, just, you know. And also regarding of the previous comments regarding of the moving the tanks, we are not moving the tanks.
I know, I know you're not, yeah. I was suggesting maybe you would, but that's a very expensive proposition.
It is.
Okay, let me ask a question. As the architect, there's one question. In the Cupertino, there are several major crossroads. This one, although it's very small, but it's very critical for the people coming to this location.
Right.
To the city hall. So when you designed the gas station, anything in your mind, you can put some, like a landmark sculpture to decorate the gas station, and make it even...
Well, matter of fact, we designed it the first time in 2016, we designed that one, we had a two-tower.
Yeah.
But, you know, the, I think, you know, the recommendation from the third-party architect, and also planning, just, you know, lower it down because you don't wanna emphasize it on the entry, but, you know, we sort of designed a different entry for it, but not to just, you know, have some kind of, you know, symmetrical elements.
Maybe some kind of a, like a cross street, that we have a Deanda and Stevens Creek, some small one, but just kind of a small one.
There is one, sign of seventy-six.
You know, I hate to, you know, you kind of hate to add bureaucracy. The Fine Arts Commission is kind of the one that has the purview on that. You didn't have any discussions with them about this, did you?
This project didn't specifically require public art, but we do obviously encourage that as part of our general plan, if that's something the commissioners can evaluate.
So tell us more about your towers that you thought about, because this intrigues me.
It was like a bell tower. It was, you know, two, you know, sort of, you know, we just, you know, changed the level of the roof, and just go up like, you know, two towers at each end.
Okay.
And because of, you know, just, you know, because of the scope of that and height, they recommended to just, you know, lower it down rather than just, you know, having a tower instead.
Well, and Steph, you know, sometimes that one architectural feature can punch up through a height limit.
So to clarify this project, we had a third-party architect to do, conduct the design review, so the intent is really made this station have more of a modern expression, so in its own expression, and working with the architect, and its expression itself, we feel like that's enough of eye-catching, if you will, right? Plus, at the center, you see in the entrance, it does have that miniature version of the tower that remains from the original, I guess, concept.
In a modern way, yes.
Okay, I confess, I'm a fan of vintage American roadside kitsch art, but perhaps this isn't the right place. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, well, let's go to public comment, we have two cards. Thank you, sir. The first is Julie Merk, or Mirkic, followed by Jennifer Griffin.
Hi.
Hi, and you have three minutes, by the way.
Yep. So I'm Julie Mersek, I'm a commercial real estate broker with Ritchie Commercial, and for thirty years have been leasing office buildings up and down Stevens Creek and Deansa. My client owns the parcel immediately behind this, which is a single-story office building, and unfortunately, due to family medical reasons, they couldn't be here, but they would like to engage with the staff to see what they could do to mitigate some things on this. As you mentioned, I mean, first and foremost, this changes what was a sleepy gas station to a liquor store. I mean, let's call a spade a spade here. So that's very problematic, particularly since our parking lot backs up to this. You're talking about minimizing the parking spaces. We feel there's gonna be overflow into our parking lot, trash, loitering. We're very concerned about the twenty-four hour. We'd like to see it held to the commercial general zoning of seven to eleven, or something close to that, because, let's face it, nothing really good happens during those off-hours from a police officer's standpoint, and we'd like to protect, you know, what we have there as far as our parcel. We're the one parcel before it becomes residential on that side of the street. There's townhomes right next to us. Everybody's been great neighbors there, it has not been a problem, but I see this with the traffic coming in off Deansa and forced to go out onto Pacifica. Four pumps versus what I think now is two pumps? No? It's four?
It's gonna stay the same.
It's the same? Same, okay. Well, it's not real heavily used right now, but I think with a mini-market in there, it's going to be. You're talking about pulling down the fence between this property and the office building behind it. It's just inviting a pedestrian pathway that invites loitering into this property, trash issues. I mean, it's just, it's not, I know there's gonna be a trash enclosure, but I don't think it's an ideal setup, and I don't think it's, you're, those cars are gonna be whipping up this street right here, wherever, you know, out here, that's where it is, you know, coming off Pacifica to get back onto the Boulevard, or back onto Stevens Creek. So we're very opposed to twenty-four hours, very opposed to the alcohol sales. If you already have four of these in town, do you need to keep having more? Is that a demand? I don't know.
Fifteen seconds.
Okay, so that's really our main issues, and then the trash, the fencing. You've got a nineteen-foot podium over the gas pumps, like to see some screening on that, and...
Okay, time's up, sorry.
Thank you.
Jennifer Griffin.
Good evening, Planning Commission, I'm Jennifer Griffin. I use this intersection a lot when I leave all the city council meetings and Planning Commission to go home at two AM, three forty-five, so I will say, it ranks as one of the funkiest intersections I have, and it's only gotten, well, I know you guys are working on it, but believe it or not, my husband, when he was three years old, actually walked across Deansa Boulevard with a little neighbor to go to the ice cream store, and he didn't get killed. This was many, many years ago. Yes, it's a very, very complicated intersection. First of all, let me say that I'm very pleased that a gas station is remaining there. We are potentially going to be losing two gas stations down Deansa Boulevard in the San Jose area that are supposed to be converted to a hotel, I think two hotels. This is in the San Jose, there is a proposed South Deansa Boulevard urban village that San Jose is working on, and we would be losing two, I think there are two seventy-six stations down there, so I'm glad that we're keeping this one up here. It's a high-visibility property. Also, I'm glad, I'm sorry to lose the car repair there, we need more of those. They all have been banished to that road out in Monovista, if they're still out there. But I would have a concern, I like the fact that there will be a convenience store there, but do the alcohol sales stop at two AM? I mean, we're not selling alcohol twenty-four hours a day, are there? I mean, this is a prime location for a holdup, I would say, because there have been an increase in strong-armed holdups all over the area, banks, twenty-four-hour convenience stores, and you have a lot of potential there. That was interesting about not blocking the entrance to it of the windows so that you can see, the more eyes that are inside, you can see what's going on. Also, you're gonna have to make sure that people aren't loitering on the property. I would expect that there'd be a lot of police drive-bys. The police station is just down Deansa Boulevard, anyway. But it is a high-visibility property. Also, we need to push heart of the city down, there are very few trees or landscaping down South Deansa Boulevard, and I think that's a great idea. I was, I understand about the redevelopment of the Deansa Square across the street, we're gonna be putting more trees in.
Fifteen seconds.
Hopefully, we're putting more trees in here, but yes, it is, I was wondering if that strip mall that is immediately south of it on the other side of the street with the eyeglass store, is that in San Jose or Cupertino? Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Okay, now, ready for commission discussion?
I do have a question. One of the speakers mentioned, the first speaker mentioned about a fence being removed between the property, the gas station and the office park, so I assume that this fence belongs to the gas station owners?
We would have to make sure if it's on their property that they would remove that fence as part of this development, just because it's in our CG zone, we wanna make sure that these properties are open, and if it is the dental office.
And then another question, and this is more, I guess I found the parking study unconvincing, I guess, at part, I'm coming from a sort of an IT standpoint where one would collect more data points before drawing a conclusion, and I was just wondering if this is typically the norm for parking studies?
It's pretty typical for a traffic consultant to ask staff to evaluate what sites do exist within the city. Different cities will have different traffic patterns, so the ones that were evaluated are major intersections off of South Deansa, two at the intersection of Stevens Creek and South Deansa, and one further down on Stevens Creek. So the three that were evaluated was part of their analysis.
All right, thank you. Also, go ahead, sorry. Well, you know, as one who's frequented more auto mechanics than I care to confess, they do require a lot of parking. I mean, you know, they park the cars they're working on, they park the cars that are finished, sometimes they have a parts car or two, and so I think eliminating the car repair will eliminate a lot of need for traffic. And it'll probably eliminate some noise, too, and most auto repairs, especially when the weather's nice, they open their garage doors, and they have their air tools going and making noise, so I think maybe it'll be a quieter place without the car repair. Although I do miss car repairs in Cupertino, they're kind of all moving down to Evelyn and Sunnyvale and things, but that's, that's part of the evolution of the city. And along those lines, I, it's my gut feeling, living in Cupertino, that we are not the kind of city that has loitering crowds around convenience stores that much, and maybe, Steph, you can give me some thoughts on that in terms of the concern. I'm not really that concerned about loitering there, because it's not a large convenience store like a Seven-Eleven, I don't think, is it?
That may be a potential tenant, we'd have to talk to the property owner to see.
Okay.
In terms of loitering, I think in this area, we did have the sheriffs evaluate the site, and they didn't see any significant concerns as part of this proposal.
Okay. Question, Phil?
You know, in general, I didn't have any issues with the, with the application. I think that it, it seems like, you know, whether it is auto repair, or whether it's a convenience store, is probably, you know, of equal value to the city, and, you know, and therefore the choice of the owner. You know, I do think that the dedication of land hopefully will make a difference. I realize that that's a problematic interchange.
Yeah.
And the only thing, my only concern there was really whether that was going to become a problem for getting in and out of, you know, access of the gas station. It seems pretty tight, I wouldn't turn around, I guess I wouldn't turn around inside a station like that, and then it does actually raise that question about, you know, whether people are coming in via turning onto Pacifica and then looping back so they can come out on Deansa, or whether they are exiting onto Pacifica. But other than that, I didn't see any issues. It seems like, it seems like it should be, not be problematic.
Okay. Yeah, it seems like it's more comfortable to exit onto Pacifica, you know, the times I've used that gas station. Okay, I would like to see, again, the largest species of tree possible planted there. I know there are limitations with gas lines and asphalt and that kind of thing, but again, is there a landscape plan that's going to be developed with staff?
So currently, the applicant has provided a conceptual landscape plan with particular species, linden trees and a crepe merdell. Prior to building permit issuance, we will be working with the applicant and with our Trees Division to make sure that the trees off of South Deansa do have that larger coverage and is not in the way of the intersection visibility.
Yeah, okay, okay.
So we do have a landscape conceptual plan, which is in the proof packet.
Okay, okay, I'm glad you're getting the city arborist involved, that's great. In terms of the fence between the properties, you know, one of my pet peeves is the compartmentalization of businesses. The worst is, there's a curb right near the Starbucks at the crossroads, just south of there, a lot of people drive over the curb trying to get to another driveway, and, you know, these little barriers between businesses, I think, are problematic. So the more we can do to promote pedestrian access to and from, I think is a good thing. I don't think it's gonna have, I don't think crime's gonna spill over into the adjacent building, and if it does, we can do something about it at the time, but I think probably promoting pedestrian connectivity is a good thing. But other than that, I have no questions or issues.
Okay, let's say fair words. I don't think this is a problematic project. It's, there's a couple of issues and the concern raised by the adjacent neighbors, trash and trash, they have an enclosed trash can there already, compared with the current one. As for the fence, if you do want to have a set of fences, you can do the fence in your property, that's the ways that we're handling the fence issue, so they, the new owner or applicant, they don't have obligation to keep the fence there, that's my understanding. And for the twenty-four hours, the convenience store, Cupertino is a kind of a, we try to promote more twenty-four hours convenience, the business along the major business street, so it's Deanda and Stevens Creek. I think this issue is coming out here several times, so I don't think this is going to have a different direction for this particular location, and also, this is at the major cities crossroads, we do need something there, if people are late, they want to have a couple of drink, or they want to buy some stuff, they can come in here, so my probably is going to just vote for yes for this particular project.
I'd actually add that, also in favor of that is that there are no immediately adjacent residential, you know, that's, that's actually quite different than some of the other locations.
Just a couple of comments. You know, a couple of months ago, I actually took an Uber to the airport, and the guy driving the Uber actually had just sold his gas station, he used to operate a gas station in Cupertino.
He used to operate a gas station in Cupertino, and so I got a 45-minute lesson. I heard about how hard it is to recruit mechanics, and had a 45-minute lesson on the difficulties in running gas stations and how much happier he is driving Uber. But in any case, just to address some of these comments that's come up, I do support the notion of a 24-hour business. I think it's, as Commissioner Sun said, it's a major artery. So I think that that would, to benefit to the community. I understand perhaps why you want to not have the mechanic there. I got my lesson, so I think convenience store is good. I think that really the only sort of, you know, when I was reading this, the concern I had was about the parking, right? Because I worry about overflow onto neighbors, because what's going to happen is if you run out, then people park on the street and people sort of, you know, just sort of overflow. But, but then I sort of, you know, trying to imagine in my past, if I seen like people hang out at gas stations. And, you know, I think if this were like a 7-Eleven next to a school, I could see that. Somehow, it's just, I, you know, I'm not, I don't, not really liking the parking study, but at the same time, I also can't imagine the place filling up, you know, filling with people hanging out there. So, yeah, and I think that stretch of the road is generally, I think it's pretty good parking-wise. So I would be in support of this, this application. Thank you.
Okay. Well, not to belabor the meeting, do you think we're ready for a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, who'd like to make a motion?
I can do it.
Okay.
Let me see now. Yeah. Let's see, this is application number DP 2017-02. Let's see.
Yes, D.
And U 2017-03, to approve these as, as a, in the pack?
There's a meeting on this one.
Oh.
Yeah.
So you want to approve the development permit, DP 2017-02, the conditional use permit 2017-03, as well as architectural and site approval permit?
ASA, yes, ASA 2017-04.
Thank you.
Sorry, thank you.
And we need to find the project exam from SEQA also, right?
Yes, and find the project exam from SEQA.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, let's see. Here we go. Next item, we'll start vote, okay. Ready, vote? And it passes unanimously, 4 to 0. Commissioner Takashi absent. Thank you. Thank you, folks, for coming out. Okay. And that, let's see, where are we? Okay, on to item number, item number four, tennis courts. Do we have a staff presentation on the tennis courts? Okay.
All right, on to our last item.
Right.
We're here to discuss existing tennis courts on the Valley Church property. This is at 10885 North Stelling Road, and we'll be evaluating two permits.
Folks, please clear the hall if you're done with the business. Thank you. Excuse me, folks, we have ample space in the foyer. Go ahead, that's a presentation.
We're evaluating two permits, use permit and an architectural and site approval permit. The conditional use and architectural and site approval permit is to permit the continued operation of five existing tennis courts. As part of the tennis courts, there are, there's associated fencing and lighting on-site. They were installed and operated by the current occupants, Valley Church, without prior permits, and they're coming back to seek those permits tonight. Here is a site diagram of the location. It is between Homestead Road and Interstate 280. North of Homestead Road is Sunnyvale jurisdiction. So just above that, we have Commercial along here in Sunnyvale. Right here is also Sunnyvale Single Family Residential. Right here is Cupertino Markham Apartments and a McDonald, our bowling alley and a commercial center for Cupertino. And the church property is comprised of five different parcels outlined in red. So a little bit about the complex here, broken it down to four areas. Area A is the existing church building and three structures on-site, they comprise of office and classroom uses. Portion B, it was an addition of a 7,200-square-foot multipurpose activity center. This was approved through a use permit, U 1989-11. C is an existing building that used to be a diving school, they maintained that building, and they decided to convert it to a youth center to support the church, church function. The building, youth center is right there, and right here are two sand volleyball courts with a grass area. And then part D is the parcel we're specifically talking about tonight. This area was partially paved as part of the improvements for Area B. When they built the multipurpose activity center, condition approval required them to use that, to pave that area as parking. In 2003, that paved parking area was converted to these tennis courts, and you can see just north of that area, right here, is existing gravel that was never paved even as part of the previous permits. For this proposal, they want to maintain the existing tennis courts and keep the gravel dirt lot, and they do have, we do have a condition requiring that that area be improved for future approvals. So that gravel area will not be developed as part of this approval. And so I have a couple of pictures showing the existing tennis courts. This is facing, most of these images are facing west. So there are five full tennis courts, and right here, you can see there's a half-court with a back wall for practice. So a tennis court, this property is zoned CG, and where the church is located is in BQ for quasi-public, mainly for church use. In the CG zone, tennis courts aren't really, they're not permitted, nor are they excluded. And so Planning Commission has the ability to evaluate whether this will have impact to the surrounding neighborhood and approve it as a conditional use. Additionally, this tennis court serves as facilities for community members and the church congregation. So this is actually a small modification to what the original church was allowed to do. So recreational facilities that are part of church function is also evaluated as a conditional use. So because of the zoning of this property and because it's a use associated with the church, we're evaluating it under one conditional use permit. The tennis courts right now operate from 7:00 to 10:00, and this is what they're requesting as part of their use permit. The volleyball courts, they were previously permitted, and they operate from 7:00 AM to about sunset. And the church, the office, the classrooms, multipurpose room, and the youth center generally run from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, various times throughout the week and during the day. So, for example, like Sunday would run from 9:00 to 12:00 for their services. They have some evening facility for youth activities as well, and the applicants are here so they can elaborate on the specific uses. We also evaluated concerns for parking and access on the site. Right now, on-site, they are providing, as part of this proposal, they would, they will be providing 361 parking stalls. They are required to do 356. For the church and multipurpose activity center, those parking ratios are listed in our Cupertino municipal code. And for the volleyball and tennis courts, we kind of evaluated other jurisdictions that have a general ratio of eight stalls and three stalls per court for the volleyball and tennis courts respectively. They will also be meeting the required bicycle parking, and they have indicated on their plans that the location of these bicycle parking close to the church, near the youth center, and critical access points to support pedestrian bicycle access to the site. So as part of the conditional use, commissioners need to be aware of the compatibility of that use to this neighborhood. We highlight here, lighting, proximity, noise, and security. Right now, on-site, they have the five tennis courts with fencing and lighting. The lighting mass are about 20 to 22 feet in height. As part of our requirements before building permit issuance, we will be requiring the applicant to provide a photometric study to ensure that the lighting there won't provide off-site glare. If you remember from the previous slide of the location of the tennis courts, they are further away, they're pretty far away from residential and offset from the major intersections off of Homestead. So in terms of lighting affecting cars driving by, there haven't been any complaints, and they don't anticipate the approval list project changing that. But we will be requiring that study to have that data to ensure that it is meeting our requirements. Proximity to residents to the west of the property is commercial office buildings, generally for tutoring, chiropractor, and other office uses. Just southwest of the property is a PG&E facility, and so residents are pretty much buffered from impacts of tennis, tennis impact, tennis court impacts. And specifically with noise, we did reach out to our code enforcement department, the City of Sunnyvale Code Enforcement Department, and they were able to provide us with a list of some of those complaints, and they only have one on record, that was a complaint about back wall noise. And the church did respond to that, and since then, we have, we haven't had any records of noise complaints. The sheriff's office also took a look at the site plan and did not see any specific concerns related to the site. As part of this approval, we, they are existing courts, and we're trying to evaluate how we can improve, improve the property for the safety of our residents through what we call a driveway consolidation. This right here is Homestead Road, and this property right here is being redeveloped as a Bank of America building. And you can see that there are two driveway accesses, one after another, one on the church property and one on the Bank of America building, Bank of America property. And so because both of these applications came in around the same time, the church members and Bank of America property owners were, we were in discussion of kind of minimizing the impact of having two driveway curb cuts to limit, you know, conflicts of in and out, and the fact that this is right at the intersection of Homestead and Stelling. Because of site constraints and the time of the development for the Bank of America building, we weren't able to physically do any layout changes, but we have worked with both of the applicants, and they will be recording a document on the property to allow for ingress egress easements and for the potential driveway consolidation when future development arises, if we can allow for, for that kind of work to be done. And so part of the environmental assessment, it is existing fillities and infill development within the city limits. So we found that the project is categorically exempt from SEQA. And we recommend that the Planning Commission adopt the draft resolutions to find out the project is exempt from SEQA and to approve the use permit to operate the existing tennis courts, and the architectural and site approval permit to evaluate the tennis courts and the fencing and lighting. Thank you.
Questions? Questions for staff?
I have one. So given that the tennis court's been in operation for about 15 years, what triggered this application?
The applicants were potentially looking for other entitlements, and we encourage them to ensure that the property is in compliance.
I see, all right, thank you.
Other entitlements, what, what do you mean?
Any future developments that they wanted to do. We weren't open to evaluating those until we ensured that the rest of the property was in compliance.
Oh, okay, all right.
So I'm curious, again, historically, if the, if the area where the tennis courts are now was paved as part of the, as conditioned for the multipurpose room, I'm curious, was it, did it just turn out that they did use that parking area?
Can I have the applicant come up?
I could hold it until their presentation, too.
Okay.
Why don't we wait till the presentation, then you can pour it all out for us, okay. Any other questions for staff?
Okay, I just want one comment. I applaud your efforts to consolidate driveways. I think that'll really help. I mean, we hear more complaints about traffic, and the fewer traffic entanglements we have, the better. So thank you for looking ahead with that. So maybe we could have the applicant's presentation now?
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is John Schwartz with JHS Consulting, and I represent the Valley Church. Thank you for hearing this item tonight. My, I wanted to mention to you that the Valley Church was formed over 59 years ago. The church first moved on to a portion of this site in 1960, and has been at this location ever since. The church has approximately 1,000 adult active members that are living in and around the Cupertino area and near the site in general, and are active members of the community. With me here tonight is Jamie Burnett, the administrative pastor of the church, Kurt Geiger, the director of facilities, and William Mayfield of Mayfield Architects. I would basically just like to thank staff, especially Ellen Yao and Chad Mosley, for their extensive effort and help in processing this application. We are trying to clean up the permit on this site, obviously. So as outlined in the staff report, we believe that the tennis courts have been in operation for 15 years. They have essentially no impact to the surrounding uses. As Ellen mentioned, they are, there's an office building and a PG&E substation-type facility. They're set back from any other homes or the major intersection. So my main point to you is thank you. We agree with the staff recommendation. We're here to answer any questions. So I'll try to answer your question about the gravel area at the north, and I may need some, some help from Willie. But basically, that area was, is never used, except on a rare occasion, is overflow parking. It's not an active part of the site, it's just there. So I don't know if you want to elaborate anymore on that, okay. So anyway, again, I'm happy to answer any other questions, or if need be, we can bring up the folks from the church.
Yeah, actually, the question was a little bit different. The, the portion, the part of the lot, of the site that's paved, where the tennis courts are now, was paved as part of the opening of the, the addition of the multipurpose center. So was that intended as additional parking for the multipurpose center? It just didn't end up being used, or?
Because it's on a separate parcel, if I understand correctly from Ellen, the way it was permitted, because it was on a different parcel, it was permitted on its own. So if you took that building as if it was functioning on its own, you take the square footage of it, divide it by X square feet, and that's how many parking spaces you needed. If, if it was considered as a part of the church building on the same parcel, it would be a classroom building, and we would have one or two parking spaces required for that, just by the number of classrooms that building would be divided into. So it's, it's requiring 129 parking spaces, if you look at it on its own, as if it was operating as an individual building in the city of Cupertino. So because it's a part of the church building, all that parking was provided, but it's really never used. If you look at the whole parking, you know, block that we have on the sheet, you can see how many spaces are there. So, so they paved over it because they never used it.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
Yes, a question about the operation of the tennis court. So I'm not a tennis player, but I have friends who are, and they always complaining about not having enough tennis courts space. I was wondering about the operations. The staff report talked about it's also open to community members. So how does that work? Do people just, is it first come, first served? It mentioned there was a signup sheet of sorts. I just wanted to understand a little bit about how you make it available to the community members currently.
It's basically open to the community, same as to the church members, and there is a signup board, so if there's a wait, you have one hour only to use it, and so anybody can get in line. There are times, we do things, so we reserve it for when we're doing something like teaching tennis lessons or something. We do offer free tennis lessons regular, and have one of our staff out there supervising and offering the free lessons.
Okay. But otherwise, so community members have the same access as congregation members, aside from the times when you have these lessons and other events, then it sounds like?
They do, and since we aren't in the 30s and 20s, we even let them play while we're having church service.
All right.
All right, thank you. Okay, any other questions for, uh, the applicant?
May I just mention what those are?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, sorry, I forgot to hand those out when I stood up the first time. We have, the church has received and assembled, uh, signatures, petitions from various members, there's about 94, almost 100 signatures, and emails and things there in that packet that we've just wanted to share with you, how, um, used the courts are, they're active, many of those folks are Cupertino residents, and some of them are outside Cupertino.
Well, this is a very efficient use of commissioners' time. I appreciate the fact that you didn't bring them all, uh, in front of the microphone tonight.
We thought of it.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, well, let's have discussion, uh, amongst the commissioners. Any thoughts?
That's too easy, I don't think it's, we need to, too much time to deliberation. This is a very simple case, it's been sitting for so many years, they just want to make a, it's legally, procedurally correctly for the future use, so it's the, I don't think it's, uh, have any objection, or we can find any reason, I guess they, for me, it's a very simple case.
I stopped by there today.
You should have put it down, the first, first one, so you can leave early.
I stopped by there today, it looks like a, you know, a clean, well-maintained, orderly operation, courts like, they're in good shape, not a lot of trash around, that kind of thing, that's always nice. Uh, I'd love to see more trees, but I'm not gonna require that or recommend that, that we require that, that's up to you, folks. So I don't, I think this is a kind of a, uh, not a big discussion item, any other?
Oh, um, I'd just share a couple of thoughts here, so, um, so, you know, my family's not a member of the congregation, but we do send our kids to your, uh, VBS, the Vacation Bible School, every summer, it's very well-run, we actually send them everywhere, you have one of the best-run, uh, VBS programs, and, um, very much appreciate you making, um, you know, these facilities.